Okay. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Historic Preservation Architectural Review Board Meeting of Thursday, July 11th, 2024. Before we start our proceedings, let us salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, to the board, have you reviewed the minutes? Any comments? additions, corrections? No? Okay. So I will move that we accept the minutes of the meeting of July 11th, 2024.
It will be June 13th.
June, I'm sorry. 2024.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now we have a correspondence requiring action. It's regarding 62 Job's Lane, and this is a request for an extension of the previous HPARB approval dated July 28th, 2022. Any discussion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now we're going to go to old business, and this is a continued public hearings. And first up is 132 Jermaine Avenue.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Please tell us who you are.
I'm Paul Ortega, Paul Ortega, contact for Jermaine.
You want to refresh everybody's memory of...
Yes, yes. Well, this is about the renovation for the garage. We converted it into a studio. You know, some work has started to be done, and this is to get approval for what is existing there now, what has been done, and to see if we can get some other items as well reviewed by the board and simply get approved. We had a visit from the board to check the site. You know, we would love to hear whatever their insights in terms of what they saw.
I'm not sure you want to hear this.
Well.
Go ahead. Tell me when you complete your...
Yeah, so, yeah, they, well, I think last time we had a meeting, you know, we reviewed in terms of what we did to the roof of the structure, the siding. We placed some, added some windows to it, a door. So the idea is to get, you know, an opinion in terms of what we can do. If we get it approved or...
So first, as you know, people visit the site, and Mr. Studenoff was there as our consultant. And Zach, you want to give a quick summary of what you wrote, your report?
Sure.
Thank you.
Quick summary of the roof. So I would say it would seem that a majority of the work has been completed. The roof has been recovered, standing seam metal roof. The siding on three of the four sides has been replaced with vertical board siding. There's one wall because the building, the garage itself, sits right on the property. So there's one side of the building which was not redone because it's out of the view of the backyard, and that retains its wood shingle siding. The other three sides are black. And the front, the face of the front of the garage facing the street and his side that is facing toward the back of the property has gotten new doors and windows, sliding doors and windows. So what I think is important here, and I point this out in the report, is that that little building is identified as a contributing structure on the property in the National Legislature nomination form. So in terms of the review, whether a building is so-called contributing or not matters. It means something. It was considered by the person who prepared this report in 1994 to be a building of interest to the property. So basically, my recommendation is that these improvements should not be approved. I think they're transformative in the sense that this now looks like aesthetically, which is, sorry, looks like a new building. It's quite visible from the street. And therefore, I think, and it's quite dissimilar from the aesthetic of the historic building house, which is still sitting there with different color, different materials. So there's really no, now, the aesthetic of this building as it has been renovated bears no relationship to the house itself. And anything that could have been considered of historical interest has been removed or covered up. So that's my sort of technical report. It's really up to your board to decide whether they're mitigating circumstances to this or not. But my feeling is that this is not the sort of work that should be encouraged. It's an accessory building. It could be argued that this is a lesser structure on the property. It is not the main historical element on the property. But on the other hand, it's identified in the same document that the house itself is identified. And so they're all governed by the same description, if you will. So that's the essence of my report.
Any comments, discussions?
I just, like, what do you, what do we do now that the historic structure has been...
So... Yes, I think we're faced with an important precedent here. They did this without approval, right? So the ultimate punishment would not be to give them, not give them a certificate of occupancy. Right? I don't know how many tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars went into this change. But to forgive it is something that would encourage other people to proceed without, without following through the proper steps. Even people who do follow the steps sometimes take liberty. How did this happen? How did this happen that you decided to, that you were, I guess, hired to reconfigure a house, and no one considered discussing it with the Department of Buildings?
Well, I was approached to just, you know, do the siding and the roof, you know, something like that. You know, I was not aware of it as a historic structure, let's say. So that's why, you know, so we did some of that work because with that, that in mind, not thinking it was a historic structure and needed to be having something of, that they already get approved. Because it's also like in the really back of the property, it was kind of next to the property line, you know. So that's probably what they're thinking was with the owners as well.
Is the material that is on there now, if you took it off, underneath it, would there be the old shingles?
No, the old shingles.
So you remove the old shingles and replace them with this? Okay.
And you dispose of them?
Well, they were deteriorated, so.
How much, according to our code, how much, when you have a stop work order and something like this was done, do we know how much money they're paying because of that right now?
No, so I don't know what was done with respect to enforcement, but that's not something that's done by this board at all. It goes to Justice Court, and it would be adjudicated before a judge in Justice Court.
Okay. So would it be possible to take away all the progress that you made and recreate in kind the way that it used to look using the same materials?
Hi, 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 Katie Lead. I'm sorry, I'm calling in because I'm having a hard time connecting. I'm in Texas for a family funeral. I'm sorry. But I'm just here. This is...
All right. All right, hello.
Yes, the home line.
Well, the idea, I mean, we have pictures of how it was before.
Yeah, we just saw, yeah, we just saw them.
Yeah, how it was.
Yeah.
But, I mean, would you be okay with the windows, you know, and the doors and all that stuff, you know, that is there right now?
Well, you disposed, you disposed of the original windows?
Well, they were like barn doors.
Weren't there windows on top?
Windows in there, yeah.
And those are gone?
Right, yeah.
Those windows from the pictures, there were two garage doors, each of which had three small square. And I put a picture from Google, I didn't have access to this picture at the time, but those show up in the picture that's on the Google map. You can barely see it through the edge, right? So those were garage doors. It's not clear that that's what they were, but...
Yeah, they slide.
Yeah. And you know what they were? They were slider, it was a big slider, and they were totally rotted and inoperable. Like, you couldn't even open it because it was on sand, you know? Like, you couldn't, it was totally, the house was going to fall in on itself, just so you know. And I know, sorry, didn't go for approval, but you could not open it. They were inoperable and decaying.
Well, there are ways to, you know, refurbish old things and make them operable. So it's unfortunate that we no longer have these doors and that you've gone through the trouble of redesigning it. But it is a historic structure, so I think you're going to have to recreate what was there.
Now, kind of, the other, just so that you understand, one of the reasons why I was trying to get more light, there was no light in that. There was no light, it's an art studio, it's an idea, and there's absolutely no light. It was so, like, worn, like, dark, 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 dark.
Yeah, so you purchased a historic property, and it needs to be preserved as you found it. That shed has been there longer than either of us have been alive. And it's unfortunate that now it no longer exists because of all the alterations that you made.
Well, I think, just for one second, that there was before that somebody was going to actually knock it down. The person that was going to, they had gotten approval to knock it down in a previous iteration to put a pool there. You could either put a pool there or knock that shed down. And that had gotten approved way back, like, 10 years ago, to knock that shed down because it was in such bad shape.
They would not have been allowed to knock the shed down because it's historic.
Even with, like, the car, even with the, Paul, what was the roof made of back then?
Asphalt shingles.
What was that? I'm so sorry, I couldn't hear.
Asphalt shingles, that's what it was.
Asphalt shingles, so that was historic asphalt shingles from 1890?
Clearly not.
Yeah, yeah. No one is saying, you don't have the advantage of my report. It's clear from maps that the building, it's not original to the property. It is not of the date of construction of the house itself. It was built later. But it was built long enough ago to be considered a historic contribution and improvement of the property. The maps show it to have been built sometime before 1930. So that's the date we're looking at. We're not going for an 1890s garage. But the point is, it was built and survived, according to these photographs, as a garage. So it survived for the purpose that it was built. And it's located, it's located in the back corner of the property, as these little accessory buildings often are. And it retains its sliding doors. They might, may not have wanted to slide quite as easily as they had to begin with, but that's an easy remedy. If the grade has raised, you get your contractor to make some easy repairs to shorten them up by two or three inches, and they'll roll very freely across the grade level. So this was not built to be an art studio, it was built to be a garage. And any change of use that would require some modification of the fenestration so that you could bring in more light would have been an appropriate application to this board to see if modifications could be made, such as a skylight that could be introduced to the back slope of the roof, which cannot be seen, that would admit a considerable amount of light, et cetera. There would be ways of modifying this former garage for use as an art studio, but none of that procedure was followed, and that puts this chiming in here. But that kind of puts this board in a very tough spot because the work's been done.
So you said what I was thinking about, the skylights. Let me ask a question. Is there a bathroom in there? There's no plumbing?
There's not right now.
Right now?
There's...
What's your intention?
Well, they're, they have a slot sink for paint. But...
Just let me, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, 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 no.
Don't worry, along the line, I thought when you started your presentation, you were talking about, like, an auxiliary dwelling unit? Is that the intent here?
Yeah.
Sure.
To use a studio.
Studio, art studio only? Okay. I'm sorry, just proceed with what you were saying.
So before, I had, I've done, I've spent a lot of money on architectural drawings that I had brought that were very charming, super charming, which you all actually really did like because you felt like it was very fitting with the historic nature of the property. And you would ask that I go before, because you liked the concept of it, and that I go before the, see what the building permit people would say. This was a year ago. I had, and I had, I had done some initial pricing on that, and it felt prohibitive to me, given, having lived in the house and I loved the house, but it's on a very loud street, I just don't know about putting that much money in, given the value of the property. So that was the thinking, like, doing a more modest situation, given the street that the house is on. And I kind of took my, I know it's a historic property, I totally hear you. If I were to go back to that original look and price out doing what historical concepts had in mind, which were much more, let's say, traditional traditional exterior, could we do that? Because I just think the way it was, I mean, I don't even know how long those doors have been, and I have no idea if those were original or not.
I've just told you, the building was constructed just prior to 1930, and those doors, those garage doors, with those four windows, six windows, unfortunately, they've been discarded. So there's no way that anyone can forensically examine the actual boards and hardware and window sashes that are embedded in those doors. But I can assure you from the photographs that you've provided that those doors are original to that building.
Oh, okay. I'm just, okay.
What needs to happen now, I believe you guys can tell me if I need to add, that you need to come back with a plan for us to look at for what you are, what you, now that you've heard the news that we've given, that this, what you've done is not acceptable. So now we need a new plan. And once, so then you come before us again and make a preservation, a presi, you know?
I think you're...
No.
Target.
Yeah. So that's what needs to happen.
Okay. Are you open, as a board, to reconsidering what historical concepts did for me a year and a half ago?
Let me see. You bring it to us and make your presentation, and we'll go from there. We'll look at it before you come, you know, once you give it to the building inspector.
Okay. And then, thank you. And then, on another note, I don't know if it's possible to move forward with whichever direction I go with, just if I need to get approval for a hot, for an above-ground hot tub in the backyard.
That, all of whatever present, you know, on your next presentation, whatever work you're going to do on this property that you want us to look at, it needs to be in your plans.
Right, so, so, let me just, let me just interject this here, okay? A lot of people come to Sac Harbor Village because it's quaint and charming and kind of has various kinds of architecture, et cetera, et cetera. And some people then decide, well, that's really sweet, but we want to build something that's out of context. What we want to, now, although you own the property, there are codes that limit what you can do on the property. And basically, that garage would, if it was a new garage, without any history, it would have been placed in a different location because there's side yard setbacks and backyard setbacks, et cetera. So there are limitations to what you can do to impose, I guess, your neighbor's space in a way. You should make sure, start fresh, and make sure everything that you want to do is identified on a land survey by a surveyor. And they should know our codes and requirements and be able to tell you, no, this must be 10 or 15 feet from this side or this back. And come to us with a comprehensive plan. Even if you don't execute it all at one time, you would have had a master plan by which you can continue to develop off of. That would be my...
Can I ask you a question, though? Because I thought that we, not with the back, now I know that the back house design has been nixed, but everything else is in a master plan. There's a landscape design, there is a land survey, that everything has been done to specifications, as far as I know.
Well, good. This wasn't done to specification. I just saw the survey roll by.
Just so I know what I'm missing, like, the survey's done, the landscape design is done, everything's been laid out in terms of intention, except for the back house.
We have a survey, which...
Well, this is what you, this is, this is what you guys submitted. It needs to be on a natural survey. It can't just be on a survey plan.
Yeah, well, the survey was provided by me just recently, so I have to submit it, you know, with everything.
Are you a surveyor?
No, no. That's my, it was submitted to me today, actually.
All right, I see. Okay. So my suggestion, my suggestion is, I would move the table to our next meeting and that you get everything in front of us so we can reconsider. Even if we have it in our records, I want to make sure that there's no mistake, no alterations, and that we take this up fresh. But it's clear we can look at what had been approved, right? And...
I don't think there are...
I don't think anything was...
It wasn't, it wasn't that it was approved. You had said, like, would it be allowed by, would it be allowed by, you liked the concept of it, but you wanted to see if it would be allowed by square, I don't know by, I don't, I don't know which. At this point, it was a year and a half ago, whatever it was. If it would be allowed by square footage allowance. Anyway, I know that you guys have to move on to other things, but I will, I will do two different plans. I think everything else is in place but the design of the back house. I think we have all of our ducks in a row besides that. My understanding, so, but I will, I will double, triple check that.
Okay, so just let me just say this. Members of the board are telling me that we did not issue a certificate. Did we issue a certificate?
No.
No, no, because you didn't issue it. I, what you liked is the concept, but you wanted to see if the city would allow the square footage because we were looking for a variance to build on the back of my porch as well. And so you want to see if the city would allow that.
It sounds like you would need to, before the next meeting, you need to speak directly with the building department and make sure that you have all your ducks in a row before you come back to present to the next meeting.
I did have a meeting with the inspector, and whatever I showed him, what we have right now, he said it will have to be up to the board in terms of approval.
But you just handed us a survey right now, so, like, obviously, we need to look at this stuff. So that's just a German acronym.
Okay.
That's, okay, agreed.
Motion to table 132 Jermaine Avenue.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's not lose that. Did we open the public hearing?
Not officially.
It's continued.
It's continued, okay, very good, okay, thank you. Who's here to represent 61 Madison Street? Hello, Anthony, how are you? Please identify yourself, sir.
Anthony Vermees, 68 Union Street. I am the architect representing Allison Whitmore, who is here with me in the program there. Okay, so we, you sport, hopefully, remembers. A few months ago, we came before you as a discussion item for this house on the corner of Madison Street and Union Street. The existing house is a one-story 1920 to 1930 bungalow. It is 18 by 36 feet. To put that in perspective, this room is 18 by 45 feet, so it could fit in this room with room to spare. So we are looking to do some, do an expansion of this house, adding approximately 500 square feet to it to make it a little bit more livable. It's now 692 square feet. So it's actually under the minimum of what code says, a single-family dwelling can be, minimum is 800 square feet. When we came here for the discussion item, we were looking at two possible ideas. One was going up, adding a second story. The other was building a one-story addition. The sport universally rejected the the two-story version and said, okay, or just to go for the one-story version. So we've been before, the Southern Board of Appeals, we've got the variances we needed, which were pretty minor. And we're back here with the one-story, one-story additions. Sure, actually, we actually even scaled it down a little bit from what you had seen when we did the discussion item. But I do have in the file there, just so you know, we have some renderings of what this will look like from street. And you can see there's an existing, basically, the entire property is edged off now.
Shed historic?
No, and I, believe me, I checked that. It says, have it right here, it said, non-contributing garage. So that shed, which is going to be torn down, is not listed. In fact, what we're basically doing is tearing down that shed and filling in the spade. The rear addition will come about to the edge of these, just going down.
I'll trade you when you're ready.
So what we have here are two additions. One is an addition coming off the side of the house, which is just a simple hip roof, 14-foot-wide addition with the hip roof matching the existing hip roof, but with a lower bridge height. And then off the back here, which is a little bit trickier to add on to in the back, we just went with this sort of simple, clean box, not, you know, not really trying to look like something it's not because, you know, we couldn't, we didn't want to just extend this out. Otherwise, the building out, pull the building out further because it would have just looked too long. So looking at the sort of imperative elevations here, you know, so you've got this existing bridge is being preserved. Existing bridge is preserved in the addition, that's not being added on to. Here's the addition in the back, here's the addition off to, off to the side. That is just for perspective, that's the little shed that we're gonna, non-contributing shed that we're tearing down. As I noted, there's quite a bit of, there's a mature hedge around the entire, both street frontages of the property. It's actually pretty hard to see the house from either Union Street or Madison Street because of the hedges. There's also some nice trees there. Right now, we're, we think, still doing the research on this, but we think we can hook up to the sewer system, which is, goes up to the old Methodist church there. which is, goes up to the, uh, up to the old Methodist church there. Uh, which would be great, because if we can do that, then we don't have to do any real, uh, tear, we don't have to tear up the, uh, landscaping other than around the, uh, uh, foundations of the, uh, of the additions. So that would be great. Um, so we're not anticipating any loss of trees at this stage, but that's dependent on whether or not we can hook up, uh, to the sewer system. And, um, couple of things, the details, um, the house basically will be, um, Alaskan yellow cedar shingles, great cedar shingle roof.
Your PDF is up now, if you, it might, it's a little easier to see that than, than these line drawings.
Okay, sure. So you can see there, that is the, uh, that is the, uh, those are the floor plans, uh, basement plan, first floor plan, and, uh, roof plan. And then next one, uh, A three, is, those are the proposed elevations. Um, so we have, uh, the existing windows are one-over-one windows, and we were kind of going back and forth about whether me, me and the homeowner were going back and forth about whether or not to do six-over-one, for the new windows, but we, in the end, we decided to stick with the, uh, one-over-one, uh, windows for the, uh, for the new, uh, double-hung windows, and then, just like a, of big kind of, uh, steel, um, unit in the, uh, in the back addition, which will be the, uh, kitchen. And then A four, uh, next one there is, or, uh, A three A, I'm sorry, is the, you know, existing and proposed elevations, uh, compared.
Well, point goes out to us right now here, on this one.
What's that?
Point out the, the existing and the additional elevations here.
So, um, existing is, uh, existing front i- um, is upper left-hand corner there, um, the side versus, the side facing, that's the side-facing Madison Street. The side-facing Union Street is upper right-hand corner, um, so those are the existing, and then immediately below them are the proposed. I think in the Ma- um, Madison Street elevation, it's maybe a little bit deceptive in two D, because that addition off the side is actually pushed well back from the front facade, and you can probably see that better in the, in the, uh, renderings there, the, uh, the axon, axonometric, uh, view. And then, um, bottom is, bottom left-hand corner is the, um, rear elevation facing east, um, and then the bottom right-hand corner is the side elevation, um, facing the, uh, neighbor to the, uh, to the north.
The bottom left is the box, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Yeah, that's a little, actually, um, addition. Total square footage that when we're all done and set with this will be one hu- one thousand one hundred ninety-six, um, square feet, so it's still, you know, a new, new house on this property could be twenty-five hundred square feet, it could be thirty-five feet tall, so.
But it'll sit on a full found, did basement.
Yep, we're gonna dig out living space. We're not gonna be able to lift the house because it is so close to the, uh, neighbor to the north. So we're gonna have to do a section by section and a Dutch cell, um, so the, um, the basement can go back to, um, A two. Thank you. Yeah, so there'll be a Dutch shelf along the, um, along the north side there, and, um, then the rest of the, you know, that's a great way to get, um, square footage without adding, um, GFA to the house. So we'll actually have, uh, actually, it ends up being only one bedroom on the, um, on the main level. Right now, there are two tiny, I think there may be nine-foot by nine-foot bedrooms on the, uh, on the first floor, so we're just gonna do with one big bedroom and then two, two smaller bed, um, two guest bedrooms in the, uh, basement of the deeper swells.
Okay, any comments? Any thoughts?
I think it's a good design. And I, I'm glad that you actually kept the one-over-one windows. I think that seems more.
It's a little more.
Traditional with that.
What was there originally, so.
Yeah, a bungalow. Yeah.
Could I ask to see the A three, I believe it's the
Yeah.
the elevation, the side elevation facing Union?
Yeah.
Yeah, the top view there. I'm just feeling that, uh, the one change to the existing house is losing that single window toward the back, where it is now, I guess, French doors leading out. Okay, and so it would seem to me just aesthetically that you're preserving the front original one-over-one window to the left, and then you move to the middle area where this is now the new wing coming out with a bank of four new windows. Right? And then you move to the right to where you go back to the wall of the existing house. But that has lost that single window, and now it's a six light pair of French doors, so. To, to me, uh, I think everything works aesthetically remarkably, because it's, I think it's a very tough project. It's a wonderful, small house that doesn't like to get much bigger, so there it is. So I think this is, this is great. I, I would just recommend that, that instead of replacing that other window, that that be retained. Because it would better preserve the, the appearance of what was there. And transforming everything to the left, so, or, I'm sorry, to the right of that little window.
I see.
You know which window I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So it would be here.
Yeah, that pair of
I mean, the reality is, this is the primary entrance into the house, so, I mean, we would have to, you know, rewrap, uh, the entrance somehow, I guess, to, to make that a window, so I mean, our, you know, certainly our preference there would be to keep the.
Right, I, I, I wasn't thinking the use, because it's not apparent from the goal, you know, and that's, I understand that's paramount issue. But I'm just saying, from the standpoint of the intention
See that picture there.
and requirement of preserving the house while enlarging it. From Union Street. What is preserved is the hip roof, the massing of the existing house, and a single window. That's what's preserved. Yeah, well, that's the whole.
You wanna look at the rendering, so there it is, it's stupid.
So, and, and I think, you know, so the new addition is very new, it's very modern, and it's quite simple, and they're, and simple in its massing, and so I think it's quite complimentary to how simple the existing building is and all of that, the scale of all that is working. I just feel that it's getting a little industrial, and that bank of four windows, plus the new two French doors, plus the bank of three windows with some sort of transoms, et cetera. All of that is very transformative, and I think the attention is being taken away from the existing house in that. So perhaps if that, I I don't design things, you're the professional. All I'm saying is that, that, that pair of doors, if it were less a sheet of glass, even if it needs to function as the new entrance, which is a practical matter that you need to address, if it were less glass and less alteration of the existing.
Just a different doorway.
Maybe a single door.
Different door, is what you're asking.
Because the pair of French doors, and they are eight feet tall?
Yeah, seven, no, seven feet tall.
Seven, okay. So, a pair of seven-foot-tall glass doors there is it's consistent with the design of the new work, but it's taking the eye away from what is actually the original building and making it harder to see it. That's my.
Yeah, I would agree with Zach. Um, I, I mean, you know me, like, I don't want to touch a historic house at all, but I appreciate how modest this is. And I think the most jarring thing to me is the amount of glass in the back, and I understand, you know, you want light in your kitchen, but I think it's one or the other, like, this big square of glass or the doors, I think, like, choose. Choose between one or the other.
Is that, is that where the, the new doors are? Is it new?
No, that's the wall of the existing house, because that's for a single window.
Okay, because it looks.
Yeah, it sits back.
When you see this, right, no, I get that, I get the bank of windows, but the four windows, yes, that sits back. Where it, it doesn't really sit back there in the fir- as it is now, correct? That's not. Does it? In the double, double windows.
I think you're asking, is, is that flush with the
Is this new?
With, with the elevation?
That, it looks much bigger to me than that. That roof looks bigger. No? Well, there's.
No, those are two.
All right, I see, I see, okay, I got you.
One on the left is the front, and the one on the right is the side.
Yeah, so there's a little overlap between, because the kitchen, the kitchen wing kind of bumps out a little bit further than, than the addition.
See, that's why.
That's due to setbacks and things like that. Um, I, you know, I, I think we can certainly reexamine that, uh, the, I think what seems like throwing everyone off is the, um, the last front door, uh, or the last double door there, and that's something we can, you know, certainly.
Yeah, I think if you just made that, and I, I know that we've talked about this before, right, in, in that, when you, when we present, it's nice to have the original and then the.
He did.
Yes.
He did do that.
In, in fact, it.
But, all right, I, to me, it looks, I don't know.
But on that link, maybe we should bring that other drawing up, because that will show it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's not on this page, but.
It's not on this page, it's on three A.
I always look for it on the same page.
Yeah, there, no.
There is a separate sheet that shows it.
All right.
Yeah.
And that's not it yet, but we're getting there, right?
That's what you said, A three, right?
Yeah, it's just a little bit, you could scroll up a little bit there, it's a top.
Oh, okay.
There it is, yeah, so that's a, that's a top. So there's that little funny shed that comes off the back of the building itself, and then there's that one window that we're talking about, yeah.
So that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, mhm, okay.
So I'm just saying, instead of that pair of doors in the middle there, that, that's where that single window is.
More or less, yeah.
Well, you'd have to sort of bump it over.
All right, so it's above it.
Give it a little.
I see. So the originals are at the top, and then now, what it's beginning to become is at the bottom.
Right.
Okay.
So that's a little.
It's underneath, not at the bottom.
Underneath, well, that's for me.
Right.
And, it's funny, right, it's just all. All right, so.
Yeah. So.
I guess we move to, uh, table this.
Well, this is a discussion item, right?
No, no, it's the deal.
No.
It was a discussion the last time.
Right.
So, so what's your response, what, you think your client would have to respond?
Yeah, I, I think we can work on that door.
Would, would they consider a window and a single door? Perhaps.
I think we should wait to see what you can come up with. That's my recommendation.
What about like a door with side lights? Right?
Maybe something like a window the size of the existing window, and then like a little, a, a narrow s- side door, kind of next to it.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, the existing front door, uh, which you have there in the upper left-hand corner, and I don't know if it's original or not, but it's an eight-light.
Yeah, it's, it's not original, yeah, definitely not original, yeah, yeah.
But I mean, there, there are doors of the period that are glazed and have, you know, glass above wood panel. So something of that nature would bring some light into that space, would be your front door, but it wouldn't be as modern and.
Yeah, okay.
Mhm.
Okay.
So.
And the light door is actually, it's a storm door, um, so.
Something.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So, maybe this, the, uh, copy of the front door in that location, just repeat the same door. Maybe.
Okay, so we'll see some new doors the next time.
Sure.
Um, and motion.
Otherwise, anything else we should?
I mean.
Very creative.
Did a good job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I'll take a motion that we table this.
Motion to table sixty-one Madison Street.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Who's here to?
We're going to record our next meeting in August eighth.
Thank you. And, uh, who's here to represent eleven Goldroth Road?
They have requested adjournment.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn eleven Goldroth.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're getting to this consent agenda items. Uh, Bethany and I have, have reviewed them. We don't think that there's anything in them that's daunting. And so I would move that we approve the, uh, the consent agenda items.
Two thirty-six Division Street, five Green Street, two twenty-one Redwood Road.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll move up to the new business public hearings. Forty-eight Union Street, who's here to? Anthony? I think we skipped over item one. Sorry, did we get to number three?
Your number two.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, forty-eight Union Street, so literally just a couple houses down from the last, uh, project. Anthony Vermees, sixty-eight Union Street, representing the homeowner, John Good. So as I think this whole board was here, uh, when we got our original ARP approval for, uh, for this house, uh, about a year ago or so. What has happened since then is we've sort of done a little bit more structural investigative. The original design was basically building o- building a second story over the existing, uh, one-story, uh, rear portion of the house. What we found in doing some structural investigation is that existing one-story part of the house, which is not a store, probably built in the, um, in the nineteen fifties or so, is basically sitting on a cinder box under, on note footing, um, and some of it is just sitting on dirt with the, um, four plates, uh, supported by cinder. It, it's bad, and there's been, there was some fire, uh, damage as well. Also, uh, we were very concerned about being able to dig a proper foundation underneath that, um, underneath that addition without undermining, um, the property of the Wailers Church, which is next door, and it, because the Wailers Church, the, the grade there starts going up very sharply, it would be hard to do that. So what our conclusion was, was to just, instead of trying to build out on top of this, um, nineteen fifties, um, thing, was to, would be to just demolish it completely. Take the house back to its original, um, back to the line of the original historic part of the house. Keep that and, um, build the new rear part of the house as new construction. Because we weren't being, um, because we weren't, we did not now need to be governed by the existing footprint of the house, we could actually change it around a little bit, actually, so that so what we're proposing now compared to what this board had already approved for that addition is a little bit few feet longer, but it's also narrower than what was, um, originally approved. Um, it's actually about a hundred square feet smaller as well, because it's new construction, we could it meant that we could make the, uh, floor plant, uh, work a little bit more efficiently. So that is really it. I'm still going to be, um, it's currently a two-family house, it's going to stay a two-family house, that basic concept does not change with the front part, historic part of a house becoming one, um, one unit, and the new rear part of a house being another unit where the homeowner is, is planning on, um, residing. Do you want to go to the elevations?
Carrie just stepped out. Oh, she's in the back.
The historic part of the house is a two-story?
Yeah, and, well, it's one and a half story.
One and a half.
Yeah, it's, um, and I think there should be photos and whatnot in your, in your file, but, um, yeah, it's a, it's a one and a half, a one and a half story with a, uh, modern dormer on the front, not, not something we added, but a, a modern, recent, uh, dormer on the front and, um, a dormer on the rear as well. There's no original windows left in the house, uh, most of the trim is gone, the front door is gone, there's very little original fabric left in the house, so a lot of what this project was, is, project is, is kind of restoring the original, um, appearance of the house. And then none of that has really changed since, uh, the original ARB approval.
So maybe we could see in elevation what the difference is.
All right, can we go to, um, A three, I think? Or A four? Yeah, there we go. So, top is the, um, top is the existing, um, top left is existing elevation from Union Street. The bottom is, uh, the top right is the elevation facing the, uh, Wailers Church.
Okay.
So you can see the, the front part of the house isn't changed at all, we're just, you know, changing the windows in the dorm around from through, from two big windows to two, uh, three smaller windows, replacing the picture window with two, um, six-over-six, uh, double-hung windows. Um, taking off the existing, uh, little porch there, uh, taking out that, the steel door that's there now, replacing it with a little bit more. Um, taking off the existing, uh, little porch there, uh, taking out that, the steel door that's there now, replacing it with a little bit more historic in appearance. There's a detail on that. I think it's A seven or A eight in the, um, drawing set. And then the addition coming out, uh, coming out the back. So as you can see, it's a little bit longer than the existing, but, um, it's also, uh, it's a little bit longer than the existing, but it's also a little bit narrower. Uh, one, one top, one thing that came up at the last hearing was just making sure that our ridge was, uh, the addition slower than the, um, than the existing, um, the, the existing, uh, ridge of the main house. So it will be, um, it's actually even a little, uh, four, we had six inches. Now it's, uh, ten, ten inches. So it's even actually more marginally lower than what was originally approved by the board. Um, go to A five. Yeah, so A five is the rear elevation of the house and then the, um, elevation facing, um, um, the east elevation.
What is that material?
Uh, vertical, uh, vertical, um, for, like, vertical boards. Yeah, like barn board.
Clapboard?
And they'll be white and, and the house is white also or no?
Yeah.
No.
Uh, the house, the, the, the historic part of the house is shingle now and will, will be shingle. Yeah.
Right. Okay. Can't stand the look of, of the vertical, um, the, the clash of materials. It feels very like red lobster to me.
Yeah.
And, um, I mean, we all know how I feel about massing regardless.
I think.
I'm, I'm keen on two-person homes, um, and since this is right next to gargantuan, um, beautiful Whalers Church, the massing doesn't really bother me. But I can't, I like.
It would probably help if.
That, the. Clapboard.
The.
If we were horizontal versus vertical.
Yeah, and I, I understand, I think, right? Because it's the new. You'd like to make it look different, but.
Idea was to make a contrast there.
Yep, yep. And we see that a lot, you know, very, very often.
Yeah, I, I just think the horizont, I'm sorry, that.
No, no, I agree. I think if we, if the, if we did the same material or put the boards going across the horizontal.
Right.
Well, what is the roof there?
The roof is, um, shingle. Yeah.
Oh, really? On the addition?
And it's like a dormer sort of coming in.
Yeah, it's a, a dormer coming out with a, um, some up pitch there for verti- base shingles.
Yeah. I think there are too many windows. And then I think what you're doing with the existing front part of the house is basically kind of returning it back to something that's a little more appropriate to its period because it's been altered or whatever. I think all that is working really well. But my feeling is that the back just feels a little too massive.
And busy.
And too many windows and they're large and so they're very closely spaced. They're like too close together when you compare them to the older front part of the house where they're not. And oftentimes you'll want those upper story windows to be smaller than the ones downstairs. So that alone could be a way of taking some of that. There's just too much window from the side, and this is kind of amusing since it's next door to the Whalers Church. Both sides of this have the look of a meeting house. They're just like a big barn with a bunch of large windows that are closely spaced. And that's a very specific kind of look for a period meeting house, not a house. So I think it's, it's, there's a lot going on. It could be simplified and I also feel that that ridge line, you're saying it used to be eight and now it's ten. And to me visually, it looks like your new roof, which stretches a long distance to the back, basically sits at the ridge line of the existing house. Technically it doesn't. You're a few inches less than a foot lower, but somehow rather that should step down, maybe even more than once. So that that back extension doesn't feel quite as large and un, yeah, unchanging as it, as goes to the back. If I look at this, I think the house on the, to the right has been added to the thing in the back, not the other way around.
Right.
So there's a kind of a preponderance of new just in its aesthetic.
So, yeah, and what are these? Are eight over eights?
Uh, six over.
There's six over six, but they cut, they look like eight over eight, don't they?
Yeah, they do. I mean, it's.
It's like many over many.
Many over many.
Not, so it's not only that they're large, it's not only that they're many of them, but that's even magnified by, by all of these individual panes to me. And I'm even wondering, did you look at it with just a simple two over two? It might be less, less. Have, have you or you, did you consider that as?
Yes.
Eric's got what you've just approved.
Oh, yeah.
Let's see.
Oh, so the windows were approved?
Yeah.
Coming back.
And then this.
When did we do this?
Well, that was, that was the existing, but not this.
And this is what was approved.
Yeah.
So what it is, right, is, is that the roof.
Now you have a full two stories. Look at the other side, right? This.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Next page, sorry.
Well, I would be glad to show us.
Yeah. So this, this is the, and I'll up to that elevation you're all looking at now.
Mhm.
So we had the six over six windows, uh, one, three, four, you know, it's four, five.
Why is it?
What changed here though is, the big change here is that we went with the vertical siding. It's sort of the horizontal siding.
Yeah, it looks, it looks better with the regular siding.
And this, this was approved?
Yes.
Hmm.
Let me take your peek when you're free.
There's one fewer window on here, which is a big improvement. There's just so many windows on that.
Yeah, that's true.
This is.
For what? For me? I don't remember this.
It's like this.
I, I really don't remember.
I mean, it's certainly, uh, you know, I mean, I don't think it's, it's, it's going to be the old breaker for us to go to har, um, shingle siding for the whole thing instead of the vertical boards. And I think we can, you know, reduce the number of windows too. That's, you know.
I would certainly suggest you also make the upper story once more. When you look at the existing house, the precedent is there. Now I understand that they're not as big, so you don't get as much light, but you're dealing with it. Something you want to be harmonious with the existing house and pick up on that concept of the first four windows being of one size and the upper story being smaller.
We can do that with one caveat. At least two of those windows will need to be casements for us to know how the simulating that.
That's why you're good at what you do.
I have a question. Um, I know I'm looking at the old plans that were approved, um, but right in regards to the historic structure is, are you changing the shingles? Are you putting clapboard up now like what it sounds like?
Yeah, so it'll be, um, clappard in the front, um, and then shingles on the side.
Is that different from the way it is now, it used to be?
Right now, it's, right now, it's all shingle.
Uh-huh. And the shingles are in bad shape or?
And I know.
Right. This is a historic house, right?
They're, they're just from, which back now. Um, I mean, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yes.
And the front's been.
And they're, they're.
Changed up.
And I think that the roof is, is asphalt now.
Yeah, I think I remember you saying that.
I think it is, yeah.
Nice.
Yeah.
So this addition on this part only has one little dormer sticking out.
Right, so this was.
That has massive, you know.
So, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the other side. This is the side, yeah. So the, the change here is that in the, this is, this is the existing here, right? So this is the fifties addition or whenever it was, right? Um, this is just going away now instead of building out on top of it. So it becomes narrower. There's actually now a median right there, right? Uh, so this is pushed away from the property line. Uh, and that's why this, so this is narrower, but the wall plate height is taller.
Right. Let me see, I.
Well.
I have to say, the addition just looks so massive compared to the historic part.
Even though you've made it narrow and from the back, which is probably the angle that most people will never see. It, it shows as a narrow extension, but from those on the sides.
Yeah, I see what you said back.
Which you do see, you know, from the street as you're going up and down Union. It will, it will, it appears as, as this very long and appears larger than it is. And it's, you know, so in other words, it's, it's, it's now three times the length of the existing old house. You go, so that emphasizes, and I think the size and the number of windows just, it furthers that visually.
Mhm.
Effect.
Well, I, I don't think we can withdraw our approval, but I'd like you to think about considering making some, some alterations here.
Right.
Sure.
Because apparently.
We will go with the smaller, uh, windows on the second floor, fewer of them and the.
Shingles.
Single siding and.
And maybe, maybe not six over six, maybe a, a little simpler.
Two over two?
It's, it's a kind of busy.
That was simplified, yeah, very busy. Yeah.
You have a well-trained eye. I'm sure you can. Okay, so, so we look forward to seeing you again now.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion table.
I'll second it. I'll second that.
Raps and.
All in, all in favor?
I agree.
Okay, who's next on the agenda? I don't want to delay things while putting this back together.
One twenty-six Bay Street.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And, uh, this is a drawing, so. So this is, uh, can you say on the first drawing for me? At the top of the drawing, you have the existing one-story ranch, which is very out of context with the whole street scape. Um, and right underneath that is the proposed design, a three-dimensional view. Um, I think you could go to the next drawing. Trying to create something that fits into the context of the neighborhood. Which is just the existing site plan. Next drawing. This is the proposed site plan. Um, so the project retains the existing first floor of the structure and adds a second story, which comes on top of the first structure. So you can see this was part of the original one-story structure and then this is the two-story piece of it. Go to the next.
No, some neighbors, I guess.
That's just the neighborhood for context, yeah. Um, I, I like to put the drawings, uh, existing and proposed on the same sheet. I think it's really helpful.
And that's what we like the best too. We always try to get people to do that.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
I think it's a really good way to understand what's being proposed. So on the left you have the existing and there's a one-story shed back there, which has a crawl space. And we're proposing to take that down completely and build a full basement and then leave the existing foundation on the front. There's an existing shot, side element also, which is, we're proposing to put in a proper foundation for that because it's kind of bare but rotting. It's built. If you can go to the next drawing. That would be again, existing first floor. So this is in the rear. There's a deck here. This is an existing side element. We're taking them down and proposing a new structure and a new reconstruction of that. This is the existing first floor reworked completely. And the existing sort of partial front porch is being expanded to give the house the scale on the front facade. If you go to the next drawing, you'll see the facades, oh, excuse me. That's upstairs. So there is no upstairs on the existing ranch. There's just a little partial attic. And then there would be two bedrooms, two bathrooms on the upper floor of the proposed. Now the elevations would be next. Nope, there's an attic, sorry. And then there's a roof plan, so you can see. Now you see that.
Oh, there you go. There we go.
So here we go. Existing front facade facing Bay Street, proposed front facade facing Bay Street. This is the existing rear facade with that little shed attached to the back of the one-story ranch. That would go away. And you can see this is the existing one-story element being kept. And then from the back you have the two-story element, which is the continuation of what is shown in the front. I think you could go to the next drawing. And again, existing on the upper left and proposed, and then existing on the upper right and proposed. Those would be the side elevations. And if you go to the next drawing, um, there is a building in the back proposed, which is a little, um, cottage. And then the next drawing shows the first floor of that cottage.
So that's the ADU you're calling as the cottage?
Excuse me. And, and. Accessory.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Mhm.
Um, and then the equipment for the pool would be in the basement of that, so we're not giving noise to the neighborhood. And now the next drawing shows the elevations of the accessory structure. And then the next drawing shows the site plan with proposed, uh, landscaping and how that would all be worked out.
Bay Street's to your right?
Bay Street is here, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so this is the front facade.
Mhm.
It's a long, narrow site. It lends itself to putting that little cottage in the back. This project has been approved by the zoning board of appeals. And I think the next drawing shows some reference images or materials as well as the existing front of the house on the left. Existing rear. This is the house next door, which we picked up on some of the detailing of. Um, which has a metal roof on the porch. It has painted shingles. It has, um, simple columns. And then the, uh, the side of the house would be white stained, shingles. The foundation would be stucco. This is a crepe myrtle, which we're proposing, and the chimney would be basically red brick. And then this is a picture of, if you go back one image, Derek. There are three small retaining walls over here, which would be only visible from this side. And that face of that wall would be that corset steel. And so, you know, I feel like this project takes something that really has no relationship to the neighborhood and no architectural context and transforms it to something that relates well to the neighborhood. And, um, hoping to hear what people's comments are.
Is this a historic house?
Yeah.
No?
No.
What's that?
I asked if it was a historic house.
It's not. It's a non-contributing structure.
Ranch.
I think it would be contributing a lot more.
There's a ranch on the cover of Zach's book, so you never know.
Well, that was a, that was a survey that we did to propose extensions of the district and additional. That was never.
So nineteen fifty's ranch house.
Yeah.
Non-contributing.
Right.
I think the way the design is now would be much more contributing to the sensibility of the village.
Any comments from the board?
I like it. I do too, and, and I feel like it's not that, uh, that large.
But.
Yeah.
Even though you, you, yep.
Sort of scaled.
And I like the way you keep the, the two flaps that are the original ranch. And they're still there and then you go up.
Go up, come on top of it, yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Um, I don't love, I don't know what the material is for the siding.
It's painted shingle. So the front is clavord and the sides are shingle.
Okay, so you have.
So it's a very traditional.
Yeah, so you have the vertical and the horizontal and the facade.
Really have a little bit of vertical siding on the upper gable to differentiate that.
Yeah.
The house next door has, you know, sort of fishtail shingles up in that zone.
Mhm.
I don't want to be literally, you know, recreating something of the neighborhood, but I'm picking up on the idea that, you know, there's a certain zone here and then the upper zone has a slightly different detail. There would be a shadow line. And that's kind of interesting, uh, the massing of a house to create shadow play. Uh, and then all the lower roofing would be standing seam metal roof, which is very traditional, um, and classic.
Yeah. Um, I would prefer. Um, I would prefer to see a more uniform, um, shingle on the facade at least, just to keep it from feeling so busy.
Feeling so what?
Busy.
Busy.
Iffy.
Busy.
Busy.
Busy, okay, all right, thank you.
You have a problem with clavor on the front and shingles on the side? Or just a problem with the gable being a different material at the front and the lower?
Yeah, I don't like, I don't like the the differentiation of materials on the facade.
It would all be painted white.
Okay.
It would be a play of shadow, it's not like a radical change of material.
Yeah, I'd prefer horizontal, that's all I'm saying.
Well, that's a subjective.
Well, I hate to disagree, but I actually like the, um,
Okay.
the, uh, under the, under the eaves being a different material, but.
We're allowed to have our.
To each, to each per own.
Any other comments, any other thoughts? I'm kind of agnostic here, um. I understand that you don't want to repeat, I understand what you don't want to repeat, what's in the neighborhood. You said fishtail or fiscale?
Fiscales.
Fiscale.
Sometimes they're round, sometimes they're.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you go through the photograph at the back, I think the last sheet, Gary. It's probably hard to tell from this photograph, yeah, it's hard to tell. Now, one one forward, there's, yeah, there, see that? See that horizontal line where the gable?
Right, right, right.
That that gives a shadow line on that structure. And then the shingles above that are all different detail at the bottom of the shingle, you see that? That's right, in all Sag Harbor houses.
All right.
And that's an eighteen ninety-five structure. But, um, I think there's a lot of really good things about it, but I'm not trying to literally reproduce it. Just relate to some of the detailing and give this house its own distinction. I think you can go back to the front facade, please.
So I I appreciate that you're following some contextuality in terms of with the neighborhood, I I think that's great. I understand what what Megan's saying, and I feel quite as strongly as she does. Um, is there any other comments? I think we should take a vote on this.
Um, I'd also like to comment on the windows, and I'm wondering if there's a way to make it more symmetrical, maybe?
Why why should it be symmetrical? I mean, what makes symmetrical better than asymmetrical?
Um, tradition.
Excuse me?
Tradition.
A bit more specific about how you'd like to see that altered.
Um.
Talking about the.
Well, there's a lot of glass, and then.
Talking about this right here?
And then I'm talking about that, yeah.
I mean, windows also reflect what's happening inside, I mean, I personally find sometimes an asymmetrical facade, I mean, the whole building is asymmetrical. This is a one-story element, this is a two-story element. I'm not sure that making those windows symmetrical is going to make it a better design.
It's going to be a brand-new house.
Different design.
Yes.
Yeah, it's it's a new, it's a new structure there.
Mm-hmm.
I think there's a little room for, um, interpretation, doesn't literally have to be historic.
The, the windows there right in the front on the bottom level, they are very, it makes it look busy, is there? Yeah.
These are doors, yeah, sliding doors.
And they have, they have the front, the front door?
The door is on the side of the house. Go to the plan, you know, go back to the plans, please.
This is, let me just ask you about that, right?
Hold on, just go back, uh.
One that we just saw.
Yeah, so you enter the house on the side and then come into the house this way.
Okay, so that's different than what you do now.
Those are sliding doors out onto the little patio.
Little porch, little porch, right, a roofed-over porch, yeah.
That's not normal.
I think in support of what's Megan's comments.
Having sliding doors on the facade of a house in a historic town.
If I could just jump in, it's the new house, so I should have nothing to say. However. You are taking the neighbor house, the eighteen nineties house, as a reference. And you're creating a new house, which is assumed the form and massing of a traditional nineteenth-century period house, quite simple. The roof pitch, the two-story massing. So what I feel we end up with, it looks like an old house that has been extensively and on more than one occasion renovated into something else. Because it looks like you've started with the guy next door, except over time, one-story sheds have appeared, the fenestration upstairs has changed, the siding has been taken out. These sliding glass doors have been introduced that are now opening out onto the front patio, which Grandma didn't enjoy.
We're not wanting to tell that narrative.
I'm I'm coming up with my narrative based upon the design that you're presenting, and I'm saying that I think Megan has quite the justification in saying, but, you know, no, you can build whatever you want. It's a new house, do whatever you want. But if you're taking a traditional form of a house and then superimposing these, in that case, an asymmetrical element, it's a little jarring because it looks like an alteration of something older. I'm not saying that's wrong, I'm just saying that's the aesthetic presentation, and it takes a little getting used to.
I understand, it's a, it's an interpretation
Yeah.
of some modern elements
Yes.
in a traditional form.
Right.
Which, I think if you look around the village, there's a lot of a lot of different things going on in this village, some things are literally historic. Other things, in the project that you were looking at just a few minutes ago, a box is going right next to a historic house that doesn't respect roof lines or anything. I don't know, it just seems like picking on the windows is, uh, kind of an odd thing, because we're not trying to be literal, we're trying to be respectful, but reinterpret. That's that's the design.
I understand.
Yes.
So just let me ask you this, those those sliding glass doors, those are facing the water, aren't they?
They're what?
They're facing the water?
Facing the front.
Facing the front.
Right, so that's, that that's really for you then to to generate a view into the.
It helps to generate a view, and I also think the porch brings the scale down. You know, many houses on that street have a front porch, so rather than looking at a two-story element clean, having the porch at the roof, giving a little shadow play again, helps the facade, I think, look more interesting and breaks down scale. Um, you know, I think it'd be nice if it could be all that glass.
Can I go back?
Can you show the picture?
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Yes, can we see the pictures again of the, yeah?
Yeah, sure. Keep going back, uh, there, right there, there you go.
Yeah, so that's a porch.
So so what is, what's?
There's a porch over it.
What, yeah, what's the?
This is a shed roof porch
Yep.
over this little
Yes.
that sort of deck porch.
What's the depth of that porch?
I think it's about six feet. So it's a place that you could sit out in the shade.
You're facing north.
Look into the water, you know?
I I, uh, I understand everyone's perspective, I think this, for me, I don't have any problems with it. Um, we can vote on it, we should vote on it.
I mean, I look at it like it's the new part of the house.
Right.
Yeah.
Or are we letting sliding glass doors on the facades of houses now? Like, who cares where it's located, he could, those could easily be windows.
Right.
And he can access his porch from the front door, like the rest of us.
Well, that would make no sense in this house, obviously, if you're talking about.
I'm sorry, sir, but this is not appropriate for the facade of a house, it's just not.
You all to vote on it.
So Megan, I'm missing your point here, this is, this is, we have uh, kind of rejected designs with where there was a prominent sort of glass facade.
Yeah.
And I don't think this qualifies for that type of rejection, because the depth of the porch and the fact that it's facing north is not going to be, you know, glaring reflections as people drive by, et cetera, et cetera. So I think there's some, been some things to mitigate the impact of this, um, and that's where we differ.
Yeah, I disagree, because I don't think that we should be invited into this man's house from the street by having two sliding glass doors. It's, it's not.
I see them more as floor-to-ceiling windows than I see them as sliding glass doors.
And it's high, right?
It's very high.
It's, it's.
The house is high.
How many houses are going to come to us and say, well, that guy did it?
Let's see.
Like, you could say the same thing about the project that had all glass facing the side street, says, you know, hedges don't.
Right, and 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 we had issues with that.
Well, you basically approved something almost like that prior, so they're coming back with some.
Every application is different, sir.
I understand, I understand.
And I'm telling you that I do not believe it is appropriate to have sliding glass doors on the facade of a house.
So if those were swing French doors, you would find it appropriate?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
But it would probably help. It'd probably help, May, right? And and wouldn't be as many.
I don't think it would look much different, frankly.
Maybe not as wide.
If those were just windows, I would, I would have an issue, I don't think it looks, it doesn't look right.
I think the historic precedent for this is the old porch, Grandma's porch.
Right.
Okay. But now we're going to glaze it and enclose it, as you might call it a summer room, it's it's enclosed.
No, it's not enclosed.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm talking precedent, I'm not talking like you, okay.
Right.
So I'm saying, the architectural historical precedent is to take the old Victorian porch and to infill between the posts or the columns, large storm windows
Right.
and glaze it in, we see that around town. I'm not saying that's aesthetically pleasing, I'm just saying that is a way of creating an all-purpose room out of your old porch by glazing in between those posts.
Right.
I don't think that's a lovely thing, it's just a historical reality, that happens. This, to me, looks kind of more like a storefront, I mean, it doesn't have that, because what I'm talking about would be a series of four-light panels, okay, it would enclose the space. I could see that reading as a historical modification of an older house, this doesn't look like that. This, to have glazed sliders on the front facade.
Right.
Whether it's old, new, or in-between, it's just not an architectural feature that you, typically, that's leading out onto the garden, that may be going out to the backyard where the pool is.
Yeah, you don't want to think it's back.
Sort of the, sort of the recreational area or private space of the property, not the more public side, which is the front, which is right on Bay Street, to me, that is a little.
Questions, yes? If if the lower section of these panels was solid and it looked like windows over a solid panel, would that, in your mind, in your mind, make it more appropriate? I'm just curious, what?
I don't know.
It might.
And there's still doors?
Yeah.
Then no.
I don't understand the problem you have with doors going directly out to a porch, why would you make somebody go around?
It's the facade of a house.
Many facades of houses have doors on them, I don't understand.
Not, not in that way. How about making it less wide, how about half that?
Or maybe some of them could be doors and some of them could be windows.
About half of that glass, half of it glass, half of it something else.
That's possible, yeah, we could study that.
Yeah.
And just out of curiosity, on the far right of this, the bottom right, the bottom left, is that a garage?
There is a garage here, that's existing.
Yeah, it's underneath, it's underneath.
It's just.
This is on a hill.
This is set in a hill.
No, okay, I just wanted to.
That's a garage.
That's fine.
Yeah, it's on a hill.
One car garage, yeah, it's existing.
All right, so do we have some sort of con, uh, concept of a compromise or an accommodation here?
An idea?
Well, I mean, not my first choice, but if you're going to vote and say you want me to come back with some other options, if you're not going to approve it, then that's what we're going to do, I don't know, you know? I I I feel like.
So let me ask you this, we can vote on it now.
Right.
Or maybe we've asked Anthony to come back with a reconsideration.
You don't want to do, you don't want to vote, I don't think you, we should vote on it. I think we should, we should table it and come back.
That's where I was going, thank you, Bethany.
Thank you. Don't vote on it now.
I I don't talk fast enough for Bethany.
Yeah, sometimes.
There is four of the five.
Yeah.
Uh, I just have a question, is, does anyone on the board have any feelings about the bottom right with the, I guess that's a bay window?
That's the back for some.
Oh, the back, okay.
Yeah, that's a bay window with doors that are part of it on either side.
Very cool. Okay, and that comes out onto a, uh.
The rear yard.
Deck?
No, no, onto a rear yard. Can you go to the site plan, please? That that just enters out.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it's a lawn area.
Yeah.
Okay, so to continue our conversation, would would you like us to vote on this now, or would you like to come back? And I think we're asking you to give this a little further consideration.
Right.
And and to really come back, and we can table it for the next meeting.
Yeah, we can do that, if you're going to vote on it and reject it, then then let's just talk about it more, then.
Okay.
Yeah.
I I I think we've, we've spent enough time here, I I think you have an idea of what's going on.
Yeah.
And and, um, I'd like to move on the agenda, but you've been very good, it's good presentation.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So I will make a motion to table this until
I'll second.
next meeting.
When is the next meeting?
August eight.
August eight.
August eight, okay.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
August eight. Um, I'm not going to be here with this thing, I'll figure out how to.
You can zoom, you can zoom in?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can zoom in.
You can zoom in.
Okay.
Okay.
I would submit all the drawings and then zoom into it?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I've lost my place, oh, that was Sag one, okay, um, who's here for thirty-seven John Street? Okay, we will open a public hearing, I move that we open a public hearing on thirty-seven John, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Jesus Christ. Spending too much time on this. Jesus. Please identify yourselves, sir.
Uh, David Griffin.
You need to make a motion to open it?
We did, yeah, we did and passed it.
He made, and and I think I seconded it.
Yeah. I I made the motion, and and Bethany.
Seconded.
Seconded. Okay.
Good evening, everyone, um, David Griffin, uh, David Griffin in Materials plus Design. Uh, it's the, uh, thirty-seven John Streets, we met, we seen last month. Um, the owner of the property, John, is back here, too. Um, he's been very integral in the design, which has been great. Um, we want to show, we want to bring up, actually, the rendering, which is how for, um, and then all this credit. The, uh, it's an addition to an existing, uh, which
On your page.
I think the left.
Oh, there it is.
Four, four phone.
We need to go.
Hmm.
It's an addition to an existing Victorian house on John Street. The addition opposed to the existing house is, uh, one thousand two hundred and thirty-five square feet uh, with two accessory structures to be added, and a pool. The pool house is two hundred square feet and a studio in the back uh, is five hundred eighty-three square feet. And, uh, we really tried very hard to tie it in with the existing house and the aesthetic of the existing house. Um, and one of the main concerns last month was, um, that we prevent this rendering. Um, we did actually modify the plan, so we can look at that if, uh, but we modified it, just brought it down actually a little bit in size to actually uh, meet our our gross square footage requirement. So it's right on right now. So, uh, yeah, so this is really, I mean, we have more sheets, we have elevations, but this is really what that elevation on the west, on the west side is looking like.
Is that fireplace now?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's a new thing?
There was a fireplace, but it was an internal fireplace, so this is an internal exterior.
Oh, I just mean, like, it wasn't in in the plan last time.
There was a fireplace, but an internal fireplace.
Oh, okay.
I'd like you to remind us of of your last proposal and show us changes that you made.
Uh, okay, so, uh, maybe, uh, the plan, which is the first, you know, second sheet. Um, no, not a lot really changed, the bedrooms are in the same place, all we did was kind of squeeze the footprint all around the building. Uh, we, uh, there was a, a mudroom on the back here that we integrated. that we integrated into this uh house, the the addition. Um but it it's all, everything is pretty much in the same place. It's two bathrooms, two bedrooms and a main living space in the center.
So it's really the exterior that we're focused on here?
Yeah, so um and we have the exterior elevations, the next sheet there. Yeah, there you go, left side. That below is the front of the house, sorry, about she foot four.
That's bad.
I think the main difference exterior wise uh on the west facade, that's the rendering, was that previously it was kind of a row of a window and then a bay window. And within that bay window was the interior fireplace.
Hmm, okay.
To shrink it and to meet the thirty-six hundred, uh we did change it this way.
So your your chimney is now exterior to that?
Yeah, yeah. It's gonna break steps, yeah.
And the pool house is connected?
It's off to the.
Is this it right here? Or no, is it a separate building somewhere?
Yeah, it's a separate building and there's elevations of that one, A one oh two. Probably is the second roof.
So, am I looking at a a roof deck here?
Yes, so there's a railing, with a railing.
Right, so um. Okay.
It's when we went to visit, as you can see, it's hedged.
It's hedged.
And uh it 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 looks out to the road.
Okay.
And the other side is uh again, really tall hedges, right, from what we saw.
All right.
Yeah, you hardly uh yeah, you hardly will see anything of it.
That little, there's a little white outline and that's top rate photo there, uh where the buildings themselves is. The back.
You guys see that?
Yeah.
I mean, the hedge is even taller now, I felt.
Right here?
Yeah.
See that, you're gonna see.
And you, to be honest, you see the point of it.
Right here.
Here as well, yeah, exactly.
Okay. Ah. It's quite beautiful.
Any uh comments from the board? I'm gonna ask you first, Megan. Any comments from the board?
Beautiful as is. Um uh it's, I don't know, it hurts to think about changing it.
Do you?
Could we go to the um the thing that shows the uh.
Front side.
Yeah, the uh.
With the alarm elevation.
Yes.
There.
That one.
Um well, we talked about the uh windows, where the the has the chimney in the middle. And um I believe it's true that those windows are not reflecting. They're they're a new design. There's, there are no other windows like that in the house with the transoms and the multiple panes.
There's the lower French doors with the transom. No, that's a, it doesn't exist in the historical house.
Right, um.
But that, but we took the little grid that's in a lot of the upper windows that were in the historic house. Um try to carry that through.
The attic windows are.
Uh-huh.
I did.
Oh, yeah, see that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It it does look better, this this rendering does definitely looks better with with the glass, with the new section compared to the original that we saw.
Mm-hmm.
It looked more um like a factory, right, to me?
We never saw the original, the original rendering.
Not a color, but we saw, you know, I don't know, I must have just felt that it was red brick or something.
Yeah, yeah, so that um fireplace was not there and it was just like a row of windows.
Right.
Yeah, that that breaks it up. And the white, it looks nice.
It's interesting that one of the standards of the Secretary of the Interior is if if you were to remove it, which you would not like to see because you've designed it and you wanna build it. But theoretically, at some future date, if it were to be removed, what what have you done to the original house? And what you have actually done is you've preserved the original house. So it is sacrificial in that sense, that it, I mean, it not for now, it needs to be aesthetically compatible and appropriate, but in terms of the impact on the existing historical resource, there is virtually none. So that 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 may be standard ten, I'm not sure what is one of them. So I I I feel that from a preservation standpoint, it's not going up on the roof line and coming out from the house and making us wonder, well, what is the original house and what is the new? We're not, we're not dealing with any of those issues. This is a one-story, quite different, but aesthetically compatible extension, and then a little one-story guy in the back, you know, I think.
And it's.
It 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 meets, it checks that.
Yeah.
Off.
Yeah.
Was that?
My new house.
Yeah.
All that good stuff.
So I agree with everything that's been said. I just wanna ask you, uh the, what I'm assuming is this this porch addition between the original house, just at the bottom, that crosshatching, what is that? Is that, is that, is that a porch rail?
Yeah, it exists that way.
Well, that's existed.
That's existed.
The one-story porch?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's existing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's there, that's part of the existing house. It was a later addition, you know, like in from in the maybe nineteen, early nineteen hundreds.
But it's.
But it's part, it's there.
Okay.
It exists.
All right. You know, there are a lot of additions that result in a lot of massing. I don't think this does that. Um I think given your objectives, it's pretty reasonable. Um I don't know if anybody else wants to comment on it.
I agree with what you say.
The uh uh phallustrade or or uh on the top of the uh new addition, is that because um the people will be up there?
Yes, so you can come out, there's a uh bathroom in that little roof section on the back of the main house. You're actually gonna be able to come out there and enter this, and it's for safety.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And we actually tried with a rail, it actually really adds to the aesthetic, put the rail.
Bethany, you're you're very. Megan, I I know you, I know you're not happy, but I'd like to hear your opinion.
Well, as much as, like, I wouldn't wanna change this house at all, I'd be so happy just living there. I I agree that the addition is modest and I respect that you are making, even though like you're making more space, but you are doing it with respect to the beautiful structure, so.
I'll make a motion.
Well, we need to look at the.
This is, do we still under discussion items?
Public hearing.
A public hearing. One, we have to go to the public. Two is you guys can approve the the addition, but we can't do the pool or the structures because it's a corner lot and it needs variances.
Okay.
Okay, clear enough.
Very good.
You can approve the house and then we'll have to note that the studio, the pool house and the pool
Okay.
is not included in this.
Pool house is within in space, that doesn't.
It's in the front yard, though.
No.
It's fucking tiny, the rear of the house?
Yeah, it actually is.
Can we see it? Can we see the plan here?
Let's open this up for public comment while we're looking for that. Does anybody from the public wanna comment on this? Who's present or on Zoom?
Is is there, maybe that that's a strange question, that is there a way to, for you to approve it as long as the zoning board approves it?
No.
But it's not zoning compliant, so it's the studio and the pool that would need um front yard. Accessory structure in the front yard.
Okay, so the other is, and there is another building.
We do the, the pool house.
The pool house, can we, can we see the pool house? If you want us to vote on it, we should see.
So it's, I think it's there. Yeah, the next sheet is.
They have a rendering for it?
We need to see it, yeah.
Can't see the number, so.
Yeah, I think. So that's there.
There you go.
Bottom right.
Yeah.
Bottom center?
Yes, yeah, or the bottom center.
It looks.
Or middle.
Yeah, it's it's much smaller, that's that's another.
The one with the man standing next to it?
No.
No, above it.
Above it.
This one.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
So what is the structure with the man standing?
That's the studio.
That's the studio that we can't do anything about yet.
Okay, all right. Um I have no comment.
Pool house is fine.
Yeah.
I just wanted to see it.
Okay.
Let's just, let's just ask Liz one question. Liz, can they approve a pool house without a pool? Cause the studio and the pool require variance, but the pool house doesn't consider the house.
So the pool, you have to go to ZVA.
Yeah.
Right.
So they really should not be approving things like a plan like this if they have to go to ZVA first.
Okay.
Generally speaking, this board doesn't have any authority to approve anything that doesn't comply with zoning. So generally, you go to ZVA, then you come back for final approval.
So just the house?
So can we do the house?
We do the house, but I keep that separate from all the accessory structure.
Oh, right. That's what I wanna know. Thank you.
Good.
Okay.
Yes, everybody knows, it's like a third of the uh the the studio structure, and it's kind of the corner of the pool that's goes into the front. So it's like the whole thing.
Yeah.
I mean.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you do the pool house, the studio and the.
Next time.
Yeah.
And then at the next.
Yeah.
All right, so let's complete the public hearing process, public comment process. I have asked people in attendance, and it seems to be no one here.
One that commented.
Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to comment? No? Then I move that we close the public comment period.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
I'll second.
Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So in in terms of what's submitted, do you wanna make the, why don't you make the motion?
I'll make a motion for the the main house on thirty seven John Street. It's a proposed one-story addition.
And that's it, right? Okay.
But you need to make a second.
Any discuss, what's, any discussion?
Well, it's.
Nobody second?
It's.
No, we we will, second is second.
It's okay to to demolish, we we're giving permission to demolish the garage
Mm-hmm.
and construct new. So, yes.
Okay, so.
Need to put the notes on there that at its time, it's just the house.
Mm-hmm.
So so Bethany, you accept the modification to your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you need a second? I'll second.
A day.
You can second.
Okay, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, who's here for three ninety-six Division Street? Please come up and identify yourself.
Good evening, uh my name is Terrance McKean. I'm representing three ninety-six Division Street. Um if you'd be kind enough to bring the the drawings up.
You're praying an awful lot, relax, you, you need to sign there.
Great, thank you. Would you mind uh starting at actually A eight, please?
Yes, just give me one moment, cause they have opened a public hearing.
Absolutely.
I move that we open the public hearing for uh three ninety-six Division Street. All in favor? Uh second, please.
All second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh A eight, please. So first, I'd like to take you to the existing home itself, the drawings. If you looked at the front of the home, up in the top left corner, you could actually see it's kind of this um kind of a seventies saltbox type of existing home. Um we, the client would like, wanted a two-story addition with a garage uh office space above it. So what we did was we took the existing roof line and mirrored it over to the other side to actually create the addition. So if you would go back to page A five, please. So, so in flipping the the roof line over, we created the actual addition on the left, that other gable. And then we took the garage on the right-hand side and pulled it off the house. Um and then we used the center line to actually create a a more of a formal entryway. Um you know, a classic type entryway with a covered roof, um couple of mahogany um deck. Um the um the metal roof is actually the a dove gray metal roof, which is kind of a matte type finish. And uh the rest of the roof is in um, it's a oyster gray um asphalt shingle. And the actual siding is the light gray pre-finished cedar shingles. So uh as we moved around on the left-hand side, um the way the existing roof line is, we had to actually cut into the roof line to kind of create light and get light into the actual bedrooms and spaces. Um if you would go to A six, A six is the, the top is the rear. Um the right-hand side is the master suite. The left-hand side is basically the dining room, kitchen area. Um on the right elevation, you could see actually on the right-hand side of that, that's the actual that's a new dining room. In between that is the existing house itself, which is actually the great room, living room. And then the uh left-hand side is the actual garage with the office space above. If you go to A three, so like I was describing before, the garage got pulled off the existing and uh we used, I mirrored basically that roof line to create a more formal entryway, the covered porch, formal entryway. Um the right is basically the existing, the left is basically new, and the middle is existing, just reconfigured. Um we had to push those bedrooms out um to the left there so we could get the natural light. Um that is got the southern exposure. Um through the great room is the kitchen dining room, and then we have a a deck off of the dining room, great room area, and a deck off the rear. Um if we go to A four.
Okay, so so we're we're not so concerned with the interior.
Okay.
And and we're just pressed for time, so let's focus on the facade, please.
Okay. So, you know, the, if we go back to A five, I guess then, the uh garage doors are a classic, you know, cottage-style door. Um the uh the decks are mahogany. Um classic two-over-two double hung windows. Uh they're white. Um um and also in the, in the back of the house, there is a um a pool house we're presenting that's on A ten. The the uh pool house itself is, I'm sorry, just A ten.
A ten.
So basically, I'm just matching the same. So, basically, I'm just matching the same detailing, the same roof pitches from the existing house. Um, it's a two hundred square foot, you know, small little pool house off the rear. Um, there is a new pool twenty by forty being presented as well. Um, with that, I'm open to any public comment that you may have.
Do you have any renderings?
I do not.
I think we could see pretty much, right? Based on what it was and what it will be.
Um.
We need.
Can you take us back to your site plan? Where's your site plan?
Sure, it's on A one.
One of Liz's pictures.
And I did do a, yeah, you requested a landscape plan, so I did also do a landscape plan, if that's maybe a little bit more clear for you.
Uh, that would be fine.
That's it, right?
Yeah, the the thing, the thing is, I'm I'm looking at those garage doors, those are facing the street, right?
Yeah, I didn't have much of a choice, the way the existing house is situated. There was no way to like turn into the actual, you know, house.
You can't see the house from the road, I don't think.
No.
No, it's a, it's a.
No, that's right, that's right.
It's a slag lot.
I remember the conversation now, thank you. Um, okay.
So yeah, you can see here, there's nowhere to really position the garage to actually get the garage doors on the side.
Right. Well, I. Okay. Um. I don't have any questions. Everybody have any comments here on the board?
I was wondering if you would consider any, uh, addition of solar panels to the roof?
Um, yeah, sure.
Considering the fact that no one can see your house, you could plaster them all over the roof.
Well, I usually what I would do is I would provide a flat roof so you can't see them.
Uh-huh.
You know, up high, but since it's an existing structure that I'm, you know, manipulating, there's not really that opportunity for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and and unfortunately, the southern side is where there is the only real neighbor. So. I I would say we're open to it, but that's where you would want to put it, and it's probably not the most ideal with the neighbor.
I I think probably I would suggest, if that is your liking, you would come back and do that after.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'd say I I would suggest that if that is what something you'd like to look into and do, that would be something to bring, to bring back and do later, not not hold up your.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Good.
Now, let's see if there's anybody from the public here.
Yes, anybody want to speak?
And nobody on Zoom, so we can.
Right.
We can close.
Okay.
Okay, I'll I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Very good, um. So I guess we could go to a vote on this if we want, right?
I I'd like to move it.
Um.
Three ninety six Division Street, proposed renovations and additions.
I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Nice. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Um.
Moving right along.
Moving right along. Uh, who's representing the Marston Street Properties?
There they are.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Matt Andrew Fowles, Mike.
I'm Bob. Wherever she is.
With, I'm the builder, as well as I'm going to be living in seven Marston.
We met you last meeting, right?
I was telling you.
On Zoom, right, I remember.
She came.
Okay.
So we're gonna start with seven?
Sure.
Okay. Now, is this a public? Do we have to open a public hearing?
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion, public, open the public hearing on seven. Can I do it for all of them, or do I have to do each one? Seven Marston Street, eleven Marston Street, fifteen Marston Street, nine Marston Street.
I'll second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Okay.
Bye.
He missed.
Okay. He must have been the last one.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It was hard as hell.
It's okay.
The last time my daughter was here, you gave a lot of first suggestions, and took a lot of them. And hopefully, you'll see that.
I saw it reflected, you love, you love posts, though.
I love what?
Posts.
Posts?
And write the columns, right? Um.
Which one are we on?
Seven.
Seven.
Hi.
This is Lori Fontana, she's the architect.
Hello.
Hi.
She's on Zoom. From McDonough.
McDonough and Conroy Architects.
Okay.
She got a little way of. Land.
So this is landscape, I think, how many good ones?
Well, we can start with the landscaping.
I think that would be, that's a good place to start.
Yeah, that is.
Wow.
Yes, it is.
Seven, seven.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry, bring them back.
You know, I think it would be a good idea, because there were comments about the site plan too.
Right.
Right, so.
Stay right there.
This is, this is for seven only, I was wondering if you want to show us the comprehensive plan
Sure.
of the, all the sacks, so to speak.
Because we have that.
Yeah, we changed the orientation of the house, it's facing Marston.
Alright, so that's it, that's a good statement, they'll all be facing Marston?
No, no, there's only two, next to Marston.
And the two will?
They're flared by.
Okay.
Oh, there you go.
Okay.
I was thinking about the whole thing this afternoon, and, uh, this is how, this is what I envisioned would be the best way to do it. To have, right, the two in the back face each other.
Right.
And have the two in the front face Marston.
Exactly.
It means the renters are curious.
Hmm.
Because that one's a little.
That one's a little long.
Yeah. But the.
Um. Yeah, well.
This is Marston, right?
So this is seven, this is, um, the one that I'll be living in, will be living in.
Mm-hmm.
And this is.
Fifteen.
Is, this one's fifteen. Okay, what we did, somebody suggested last time to turn it, turn the house, and make it much narrower.
Mm-hmm.
So we did that. And so we have the front entrance over there.
It helps to see.
Both of these are facing Marston.
Yes.
And these two are facing each other internally. So you, this is just to to emphasize the impact of the school, right? This is, this is, uh.
But the school is over here.
The school's over here.
Right, you know. Yeah, this is the back of the lot, and this is the front.
Okay, got you, I got you there, thank you.
But this is also higher.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay.
So you're kind of down almost in like a little hole.
Mm-hmm.
Or maybe a big hole.
Yeah.
This is the whole property.
Have you tested for the water levels yet?
Yes. Roughly sixteen.
Thank you for that. I guess we'll keep it if anyone wants to take it. Alright, so let's, this is seven now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So seven, what we did is we lowered, the second floor is nine feet, and then we also shoved the floor joists to twelves from fourteens, so we cut it down. And, um, I added a little quirky, somebody said something about being a little quirky, and I had the, um, this brownish window next to the door.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we softened it up with, uh, landscaping, flowery landscaping. The one thing that's a little different that the renderer didn't do correctly is the fence was supposed to face the street.
Mm-hmm.
And the bushes are behind the fence.
Okay.
Okay.
And it shows it on the plan?
They.
That way?
They, they did.
The one you just said, but on, oh.
So the, I didn't realize the landscaper brought it up wrong, and then he copied the landscape correctly, but which was incorrect. But it's a nice-looking fence, expensive fence, so that's why, uh.
And it's wood, wooden fence, yeah, it is.
But as far as the landscaping and all goes like that, and there was a nice, it's really, it looked beautiful, and, uh, I think it fits into the village nicely.
Mm-hmm.
So just describe this fence to us.
Oh, no, I have each different fence.
Okay, so so this one, describe this fence to us.
I'm showing this.
Okay.
Seven, this, uh, you know, they have these posts and they're.
Okay.
You know.
And definitely on the outside.
Many of these in, uh, many of these in town.
So you know there's a four-foot maximum here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
This is a four-foot fence.
And you're, and you're painting it white?
White, yes.
Yeah.
I just didn't get a picture of one.
Okay.
But there's a lot of these in town.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
These are beautiful.
Okay, and then your, your landscaping is going to be behind the fence?
The bushes will be behind the fence, then, you know, we don't want all this in front of the house and everything.
Okay.
Couple of trees.
Is this, this isn't that house, right? No.
This is that house, but the fence is.
We're at a different angle or something? Oh, yeah, there it is, new shutters, which, yes. But the bushes are going to be behind the fence.
Right.
I mean, if you like the bushes in front, you can leave the bushes in front, but I don't like the
Yeah, that's.
country look of the fences.
You know, because now, I mean, we can't, I don't think that we'll be able to make a, a, you know, decision unless the landscaping is the way you want it.
So I have a question, do you like it with the bushes in front?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, so then I'd say leave it that way.
The way you have.
Yes.
Yep.
Well.
Megan?
How, um, large is this house?
How large is the house? I'm gonna say it's roughly.
Four thousand seven hundred and three square feet.
Wait, no, it's rough, this one?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Wait, oh, I'm sorry. Now, is this forty-seven, I think? Oh, okay, it's forty-seven hundred.
Okay, and are you aware of the average square footage of the homes in the area?
Well, this property is about three times the local
Mm-hmm.
size, so the house is roughly, um, maybe doubled what the locals, like, the average one is like two thousand, but the one across the street is, uh, added, they used every usable foot. And so did all the other ones on, um, Montour Highway that you sent me to this time. And everyone said the max of what their lot can hold.
So I, um, did some research about what the average square footage of the block between Madison, Division, Marston, and Jermaine. There are eighteen houses, and the average square footage is two thousand two hundred and fifty-seven. So, I would say that anything over three thousand square feet is way out of character for the neighborhood.
However, this house is set back. The property is.
That's also different for the neighborhood, most of the houses are not set back right in the neighborhood here.
Can I ask a question?
Well, there is a setback, the town requires a minimum of third for your front, now it's set back, so you can even closer.
How big is the hat, the other house across the street on Mars? The new house, do we know how big that is going to be? The one, the one that's, no.
The new one, roughly five thousand.
Right, is that correct?
I, I, I wouldn't.
We have, we have.
Yeah.
We'd have to go tell them. But I, I mean, that's we have, uh, approved that, and it's.
That's the other Marston.
Yeah.
That was the lot on the other side of the street, though.
The one that was kind of contemporary.
That we just approved, two, like, two, three months ago.
But it is not in the historic district.
Yes, this is the historic district.
No. The one that we approved
The one across the street.
Across the street is not in the historic district. You sure?
Yes, it is.
Oh, we have.
Somebody brought up the fact that that lot is not in the district, but all the others are. Yeah. So, unless I'm hallucinating, I don't know who said that.
I don't know, I don't know that.
Anyway.
I think maybe you're thinking of Metalwork Lane.
No. We'll see what they say, because I I'd like that house on the corner where all that work is being done, that's considered historical. Okay, are you, the, the old, the big old house, yeah. Right next door to the lot. Yeah. I don't know, there was a statement about that.
There was, uh, D was chair. We did that one.
Oh, yes, we, we looked at all this.
Right.
I have the map, but I can't find it, because I'm getting old and I can't see all that. But I defer to my younger colleague here.
There you go.
There's the map, but it's such a small scale, it's hard.
Certainly is.
Can you locate the school?
Question that the property is not contributing to the district, it's just
Right.
whether it is technically within the boundary line, that's what you, yeah. So where are we? So is this the coming down?
This is, um, Maine, right? This is Madison, which is what we go up to.
Yeah, and this would be Division.
Doesn't tell me, yeah, it doesn't, you know what I'm saying.
But where's the school?
Madison.
Can we find this?
That's right, the school, don't you think, or this is the school?
Thinking this is the school, and is this that's probably Marston, this large, under dollar property here, is that it?
Right.
Probably, and his light is right there.
Yeah.
So it's very much in the historic district.
Right.
Which extends about three or four blocks.
They all, yeah, they all are.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Separate issue, but just to answer the.
But like they said, the land. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But I'm just curious about the size of that other house.
That was a fool.
Carrie's looking it up now.
I would have voted no on that house, no.
I know you would have, but.
But you said even the other ones are all, I think that's on my, um, Montour.
Well, yeah.
So why don't we move on, while Carrie's looking that up?
Okay.
Okay.
But the front elevation, you, was good, and you liked it?
We need to look at the elevation, correct?
Yeah, so let's, we're we're on just seven, we're going to do them individually.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, but I mean, we need to, we've seen.
Do you wanna look again at seven?
We've looked at the rendering, but we need to look at a elevation, correct?
Elevation, right, so Megan, do you have any? I know, I know how you feel about the size.
Yeah, it's too, I think it's too wide, it doesn't fit into the character in that manner. Fifteen was the only one that I wrote on my notes, this facade with works, um, seven. No. Did you guys look at the neighborhood?
Yes. That lot is two hundred and six.
No.
Okay.
Two hundred and six one, this house is normally what sixteen, sixty three or.
Something that would be more appropriate would be like a three bay window, like, like a small house because this is a neighborhood of small homes.
What about the house across the street?
I would defer.
Which one?
The one that's just on.
I wouldn't approve that.
And then the other one is on the bushes of a pretty house actually.
I think it's under three thousand square feet.
I don't know, but I I don't know, I'm just looking. But this is a tremendous lot.
It is.
You wanna ask?
Unfortunately,
so if you.
You're surrounded by small homes and this is a residential neighborhood.
Okay, guys, let's have one conversation.
That's true too. There's not many houses that street.
Just inappropriate.
Five thousand two hundred.
Okay.
I was not, could be, yeah, I did not approve that.
Right.
And I maintain.
Okay, we we wouldn't mind your expertise or your recommendations, but if you wanna.
Either the size, is there anything you don't like about that house?
You're on the horns of a dilemma, I don't think it's a good.
Um.
But that's the.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
Can, can we see that, Carrie, can we see the, the elevations of this house? Yeah. There you go.
No, that, oh, yeah, yeah, that's.
That's it, right, yeah, yeah, so what, what do you wanna say about this, sir?
Is that seven?
No, this difference.
It's reversed.
Oh.
The rendering is correct.
The rendering is correct, that's uh.
Okay. So this is just flipped because we've printing.
It was my error.
Oh, oh.
So, so which is right and which is wrong?
This is correct.
Then she's fired.
So, but we would need the plans to be correct.
When we oriented the house, um, I accidentally um, mirrored it.
Okay.
But otherwise, essentially the same.
So, so do you wanna take us through this, you start to tell us about the, the heights and the ceilings and you wanna get an understanding of what the mass is here, you wanna tell us?
Well, it's ten feet on the first floor, nine feet on the second, like I said, I shrunk the choice also to uh, twelve.
Twelve's worth, so fourteen's.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the dorm is just for show, just because.
Uh huh, okay.
We're also almost two and a half feet underneath the max and the fact that we're down six feet from the road. Um, is the mass and scale of the house.
Yeah, because the.
Understood.
You know, everybody else is love life.
Right.
So you're looking down on this house.
Understood.
And, and what's the, the square footage?
Forty seven.
Call it forty eight, it's forty seven and change.
Forty seven oh three.
Oh, oh three, okay, whatever, so.
She's right on, she can hear everything, can't she?
It's my job.
Oh, you got it.
Okay, so this, this has no zoning issues, I would think, right? There's no, okay.
None.
And, and in addition to this, um, let's look at the other elevations and then let's go on to, to uh, whatever other standing structures you're gonna have on this lot.
On this lot, yeah.
So that's the rear elevation.
Okay.
That's.
That's actually the left side, that's.
That's reverse, cuz the house is flat.
Right.
Right.
It's actually the left side. The west.
I'm not sure what that is.
It's the ounces that are required to, to show the overhangs and the sweep and.
Thank you, Carrie.
Okay.
We get one more elevation then.
Oh, thank God.
Laurie?
What, I'm sorry.
We get the other side. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So tell, tell us about, listen, guys, I'd like to, I'd like us to kinda get back to focus, we've got a lot of work to do tonight.
At the last meeting, you indicated that you didn't want matching, you wanted individual personalities with the houses. So this house is traditional um, feeder, uh, shingle, um, it is um, the color is, is gray, is, is gray.
It's bright gray with light shutters.
More um, blue, um, what is called San Francisco Bay shutter color, blue. So it's a light pale gray with the um, blue shutters. Um, the uh, the garage and the um, pool cabana, which is basically a covered area. Um, all are in the same color. Um, we did go with the traditional, you know, arc top um, gate. Um, all the trim is, and window trim is white.
It's white, correct?
Yeah.
Anybody here on the board would like to comment? This is a public hearing, right?
Yes.
Okay, would anybody in the audience like to comment? Okay.
Nope, you have, you have.
Do you guys want to look at all of them, or you wanna comment on each one?
I have a request. All of these renderings.
May you come up and state your name?
Yep. Yes, uh, all of Bernard. All of these renderings look as if this is in flat land, as you know, Wanton Street is a valley, how are you configuring the land and what happens to that street, does it change?
No, 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 the, the topo, the topographical is all the same.
Well, this looks like it's a flat.
Well, if you're standing on Marsden, that would be flat, okay, yes, so.
It's high on one side and high on another.
No, the other side is flat also, it's only on the right side by the school.
Right.
The school is high, so the school will have a retaining wall.
And, and the, and the street goes down and back up.
Right, and the street comes down here, so on the right hand side, this is on the left hand side. This house.
Facing.
Facing Marsden, so you come down the street and you're at the end, this is flat and you're going in, it's flat.
I understand, but the whole development, uh, how is the development flat?
Yeah, yeah, so because this, over here, which is Division, will have a retaining wall. Because the sidewalk is up here.
And the access.
Marsden Street is this way. You cannot call out from the audience, I'm sorry, do you wanna make a comment?
The access to your main driveway.
Is on Marsden.
Is on Marsden?
No, 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 what it is, is the front door is on Marsden, but to get to the drive, to uh, the garage, you have to go through the flag and turn in, so there will be no driveway on Marsden.
No.
There. No driveway, that's, that's for the flag.
But how does the development exit from Mars?
No, no, there's a flare, the flare is maybe.
There you go, there's some, there it is. There you go.
Yeah, the driveway, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, but Marsden isn't flat, what I wanna know is, where is this, it's flat? Uh, elevation, because the street is like this.
If you lower this line, you will.
So this is really all trending to a cocker, they just changed their house.
Yeah. Driveway and there's the house.
No, no, the other way.
So the garages, doors and all that issue, they answered.
This pipe, it's not flat, so you see that's indicating retaining walls, you see in the corner? On the right? While it's going up.
Why is the lowest part of Mars?
Well, it's all of this roughly had a rate of twenty two. Everything here, except for up there, which is um, its highest point is about twelve feet higher.
Is this driveway at the lowest point of Marsden?
Pretty much, yeah, it's all flat, it's all flat, so you know we're all.
But the street isn't flat.
It is over there, so you know where like all those sewer, sewer covers are on Marsden?
I know you're trying to answer a question, but this is really an opportunity, when the public speaks, it's really an opportunity to give a public comment to the board.
Well. Oh, sorry. Sorry.
So do you have a public comment for the board, please provide your thoughts.
Well, I, what I, it, it looks all very flat, I don't understand, I know.
So what's your concern about the fact that the representation is, is not?
Reflective of the configuration of the street.
Of, of, yeah. Yeah, so what's, what's your?
And, and it's not a complaint, I just don't understand how it's configured, everything here looks flat as if you're on a plane and that street is very unusual on, in Sag Harbor.
I agree with you.
We have a Mars, we have a house on.
Okay, I agree with you, so, so there are drainage issues and other things about, based on the contour of the street, right?
Yes, or, or whether this, how the street changes, if the street doesn't change.
So, so what, what they're really trying to say to you is that the entrance is in the center of Marsden Street, right?
Probably its lowest point.
Which is probably its lowest point, but that's his problem. Um, the, the.
I don't object to that, what I don't understand from these is the di- topography.
Right, and, and I don't think we have a topographical survey here that we can look at. But, well taken, has your question been answered, sir?
My question, the renderings look like they're on flat land.
I, I, we understand that, we understand that.
That's not the configuration of either the topography of that land or the street. So I'm just wondering why.
Okay.
Looks different.
Well, have you seen, have you looked at the renderings of all four houses? Have you, so you're just looking at number seven, right?
Maybe if you looked at this, you would see.
Number seven.
Well, he's got that stuff on the screen.
Yeah, number seven is the.
Right.
The actual. Well, this is a.
This is just a concept plan.
Right, okay.
Although that it shows a topography, but there should be plans in the file, on file of the building department that you can come inspect if you like.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, and the other comments? Please come forward.
I have a question.
Uh, please come all the way forward.
I have a question about, vis a vis the article that I read, it said that all the houses would be the same, I just wanna know if they are or if they, if they will be different.
Well, the, reported correctly at the time, that was last month.
Right.
We, we, we noted that, and that's why it was reported, and we asked them to, to start to differentiate the houses.
Thank you, that's all I want.
Okay. So any other question? Please come forward all the way, and I'd really appreciate it if you identify yourself. Thank you.
Your neighbor. Hi. Uh, we are Oppenheimer, I live at eight Marsden Street. And although this is probably not Jermaine, in some ways, this property has never been developed, historically, it's been an ice field as we know, it's been a filled up for the previous owner, and um, it has been the home of many species of birds, trees, plants, insects, native flowers, a few, mostly invasives, but if you follow the Times or Margaret Rankle, you'll know that this will become a heat, a heat sink if it's totally denuded of trees. Sag Harbor is being developed at an incredibly quick pace for an old town, and we need more trees. This is not the historic rendering of our woods that we've had across the street from our house for thirty years, and it certainly isn't the way it looked a hundred years ago. Now, that's not their problem in some ways because it's, it's not part of the rules, but it needs to be considered. We've lost our owls in my block, I've had owls every summer for twenty nine summers, and for the first summer in thirty years, there's no owl. And because of all the noise, we need more trees, you can't take away the trees, they might be invasive species, but as was said in the Times in the science section recently, even invasive species during climate change are needed species, any green tree, any shade, any root system will maintain your property better than taking it away. There's also, has been said so many times of the village in the last few years, tremendous flooding problems in this acreage. And it's, it's a concern to all of us, I also have one technical, it says in all your plans that you'll be on the public water system, the street is not on the public water system. We have never been on the water system because it costs fifty thousand dollars to put a pipe down Marsden Street.
Okay. So, could I address that?
Thirty years ago.
There are, the public water is already on um, the two that are bordering Division and then they're, they're bringing it through, um, through our property, through uh, an easement to the other two. So the public water is on Marsden Street properties.
Or will be, right, it isn't there yet, but it will.
Right.
Okay.
And I understand the guy across the street is also getting public water.
Okay.
I, I just wanna reiterate that historically, this has been a semi wooded area, it's home to much stuff, and I'd like to see some consideration of it because otherwise it's just a flat field.
So, um, thank you, I, I'll just, I'll just, no, that's fine, that's fine, you can address this, I've, I've been here all my life.
Yeah.
And I've seen the transition. I believe there used to be a three legged uh, buck on that property, right?
Yeah.
And.
Oh, just recently.
Okay, and, and um, you know, you mentioned owls, I, I'll mention bats, right, so.
We still have bats.
So, huh?
We still have bats.
But we don't have bats.
But they need to.
And, and so it, it is unfortunate, it is going quickly, but there's nothing that this committee can do.
But we can ask.
Within its jurisdiction.
We can ask.
I, I appreciate you asking the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other public comments? Do we have anything on, on Zoom, we have any hands up, please come up, or we find out if there's anybody on Zoom.
Yeah, I'm John Oppenheimer.
Oppenheimer.
Uh, what is the current village law now with taking out trees, and are any trees on the property? Do they need to remain there, or can it all go, cuz right now, I mean, I, there's not much landscaping that I see on these drawings, maybe there's more, that's not being shown, but it's very little left.
So there is, Liz.
The tree preservation law starts at twelve inch caliber.
Diameter caliper reading at four and a half feet. And, and trees larger than that have to be, Liz, let me let you do it.
You have to file a tree permit with the building department before you actually permit the tree, yeah. And sometimes they require a tree survey depending on how many large trees on the property.
Right, has this property been assessed for the, for those trees?
But it's really, it's really something that would be um, determined by the building department.
When does that hap, when does that happen?
Probably upon submission of a building permit. They're in the initial stages of getting review, they haven't, they haven't gotten there yet, yeah, they're something. But they have landscaping plans that you can come and view when you're in town hall, when you're in village, in the village, you can come and look at the landscaping plans on file. But they're not just renderings, but actual landscaping.
Any other comments? Anybody online, Carrie?
I don't see anybody online.
No hands up, okay. That's the architect, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, great, okay, I didn't see my ha, my, the hand wasn't going up, anyway, I think, um, just to follow up on what the Oppenheimers were saying, I know that um, you know, the, the, you know, some of this, some of the site uh, and tree issues is not necessarily the purview of this board, but you, it is within your purview to look at the planting and the landscape plan. And if you're looking at, you know, renderings that don't show the accurate topographical uh, reality of this site, and they absolutely don't, I've looked at, I've looked at them very closely, I'm familiar with the property, uh, but, you know, maybe one thing that the ARB could look for is to encourage the applicant to uh, mark all of the trees that are larger than a certain caliper, I think it's twelve inches, and then submit a plan showing which of these trees are um, you know, are intended to be cut down, looks like every large tree or everything uh, bigger than twelve inches uh, is intended to be cut down. When you have a, a, you know, groundwater at six feet in a valley, um, it would be wise to just uh, consider the impact uh, to the houses themselves, but you never, no, never mind uh, the flooding in the street that would happen from clear cutting these four lots where the trees that are there drink a tremendous amount of water, and I don't know that the town is going to be able to give you uh, sewer service to accept the amount of water that's gonna be generated by runoff uh, by these full um, you know, basements, I assume the basements are nine, ten feet, uh, you know, in a, in a uh, six foot, you know, uh, groundwater level, so that's a, that's a, four giant bathtubs plus the pools going into that spot. Um, just, just very quickly, I don't wanna take too much time, but I, I mean, a, a lot of people just were upset in looking at these renderings, and why does, why do these houses look like kind of middle island suburban houses, just to, you know, to, to put some, some language to it, they are, you know, kind of a traditional. They are, you know, kind of a traditional style, but they're in kind of historical pastiche. There are these sort of undersized phony dormers that don't really operate as dormers. There are fixed window shutters that if you look at them, if they were operable, they wouldn't cover the actual windows. There's that oval side light next to the door seemingly borrowed from one other, you know, kind of architectural style. It's different from the style that's there, and it's just one tiny little, little thing. You know, I think the best house that, that could really go, houses that could go on this property would be houses that really respect the lay of the land, that are low slung. They could probably take up a much larger footprint if they kept more of the vegetation that's there. And I'll let others speak. I just wanted to make those few points.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you. Anyone else on the line?
Nobody has their hand raised, but neither does she, so.
And who was that that we heard?
Karen Aragoni.
Aragoni?
And, yeah, her name was Karen Aragoni. She didn't introduce herself.
No.
Okay. I said it on the thing.
Is there anyone who would like, who's on Zoom who would like to comment? You can, they can unmute themselves, right? Apparently so.
I don't see anybody. Does anybody want to talk that didn't, you don't have?
Didn't speak.
Okay, all right, then we'll assume that no one else wants to talk.
Okay.
So, let me say this. You can see this is very passionate here in the village. The school wanted to buy that property, as you probably know, and put an athletic field or a science lab, or we didn't know what they wanted to do with it. The infrastructure questions were raised in regard to the school and what would be needed in terms of drainage, et cetera, et cetera. So...
Want to say a little bit?
Sure, you might as well.
Okay, so there is a sewer on Division that they currently, it overflows. They have it overflowing on my property. They, we went and told them about it. They're gonna put in a larger dry well. Then in addition to, despite what they're saying, it's pretty much flat. This is coming, we're gonna have a retaining wall here. It will be flat. There'll be significant dry wells there that will absorb all of it. And that's, that's how...
And the wall that you're talking about will be along Division.
On the corner of Division, right?
Right, but I'm...
Because you're up high.
Like, we haven't, we hadn't gotten to that yet because this is not on Division. This number seven is not on Division, correct?
No.
That was, that was one point we did not...
Yeah, so you want to do that one next?
Have we finished on seven?
I think for now.
Okay.
So can we vote on seven?
Well...
I think, I don't think we'll be able to vote.
I think we, yeah, I think we need, no, I don't. I think that we need...
But I mean, I don't think we can vote until...
Also, the plans need to be correct. Like, even the mirroring, like, we can't have that.
So my thought here is that we should look at all four of them each before we, and comment on them individually.
No problem.
Okay, I think that that's the most efficient way to do it. Is there someone who's looking to make a comment?
That was Karen.
Oh, that was Karen, okay.
Goodbye, Karen.
So, so whatever, okay, I'm gonna give you an overall thing. I think in terms of the renderings that I've seen, as I mentioned to you, there's this thing about the columns and the covered porches. The other thing I was gonna say is that if you guys listening to me or... I'm giving you an overall for the ones that I've seen.
Yes.
Before we go to them.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so they all seem to be, you know, of a light kind of beige-y, light color. I thought I was gonna see some, maybe some blues or some darker grays with white trim. So, and they seem to be the same. Everyone seems to be trying to get the same aesthetic, and that's my impression.
The tan one with those in the back. We have an all-white one across the street from that. In front, we have a cedar with tan trim, and then we have a blue. I mean, excuse me, gray with blue. So I don't see how those are the same.
I didn't say the same. I said similar. In other words, you drive down the street in Sag Harbor and you see successive houses, even if they're in the same period with different paint colors, et cetera, et cetera. Some are darker, darker or middle-range color. Some are light-colored. I just think that these are all kind of beige-y and light. And that's okay. That's just my comment. I'm making my comment, okay?
So this is the front. I bet you it will be located in the...
Right. But let me also...
This is not, this is not seven, right?
This is fifteen.
This is fifteen.
Fortunately, the renderer didn't catch up to the, to the landscape plan. So there is a fence that goes this way and this way, which is not on here.
Yeah, well, the rendering, right, well, the rendering isn't what we, what we base our decisions on. It's the actual plan and of the...
But you give them, you know, what's going on.
Right, right. No, I know, they're helpful.
Okay.
But this is what I presented last time. So now the front is only thirty-nine feet wide.
Okay, this one is much better, actually. So let's continue.
Yes.
All right.
Let's go to number fifteen.
Let's go to number fifteen. Yes, fifteen is here.
No, I think they're, they're more at fifteen.
Yeah, I want to, can we all see fifteen up on the screen? Fifteen is the other one.
They don't have, I don't have the front facade, so that's why I need to...
Does the architect have the front facade?
Yes.
Fifteen? Can we give her control?
Well, no, she has the front on the, like, operation plans.
Wow, no, this is...
Do you have the renderings?
I have to know later because I realize I should have made a mistake. So we have the renderings.
That's the one you saw. This is...
Like, at the front, yeah.
This is the front.
So that's the side.
This is the front of fifteen. This is what faces Marsden.
Marsden.
So the front, even...
So you go down this walkway to the front door.
So you're gonna have, that's why you were talking about the fence and all that?
Yeah, because this will have tree, you know, bushes and stuff here. You're not gonna see into the backyard. That will be blocked.
Have you seen this?
It looks like, though, you can see the pool, like, the pool's in...
No, 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 because you don't have...
This is fifteen. But that's the front at fifteen, there you go.
But again, you don't see this because it's gonna be blocked by landscaping.
Yes.
And there'll be landscaping here in the fence. Unfortunately, like I said, it's on the landscaping plan, but it's not on.
Okay.
If it needs to catch up in time.
And then further place all the trees.
Oh. You know what? I think we've kind of lost control of this thing today. I would, I would like to really think, because things came in in drips and drabs, I was aware that you...
No, we have, we have the plans.
Yeah, but I'm, you know...
The plant, the plant couldn't, and not just need to be placed.
What did you tell me, Rod, today?
The P D F.
The P D F, okay.
Our copies have been here since the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
And they're...
I just figured I wanted to bring that one.
Yes, sorry.
I see how the, so this is fifteen now.
This is fifteen, yeah.
So the house was turned on its side. You have the walkway to Marsden Street. And then in order to access the garage, you have to go through the flag.
Okay. So that is that, the picture, can, that is the front?
Yeah.
But again...
This is gonna face Marsden.
But this is blocked off, and that's...
Right, right, right. I understand that part. Okay, so that's the actual front.
Right.
And then the side is...
That's one side.
Yeah.
And the other side is here.
And then the back is... Thank you. I was thinking, but I didn't say it. So...
The one that also patterns the retaining wall.
And that's in the plan here?
No.
Yes, yes. This is the retaining wall. It's at the highest at the corner. Okay, and then it slopes down this way and slopes down this way. Okay, this is Marsden, that's Division. So it's the highest in the corner and then goes down and goes down.
Okay.
And that will be all vegetated and so forth.
And we'll have to see, in order for, for you to be able to move forward and to bring this up as a, to be voted on and stuff, everything you're mentioning has to be presented to us. We have to see it. We can't, we can't...
No, I know, we'll get the rendering. We'll get the rendering to catch up to the plan then.
Are the plan, the plans, though, that were submitted, they're, they're correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's just the picture renderings that is flipped.
All right.
And we've had the plans, so... All right, we need, we don't need to do, one, they're separate. So we have to do it separately. We can't be...
No, okay, I understand. Yeah, we'd like to hold a special session for this to tell you the truth. I think that that would be more, better for everybody if we could do that. Is there, would you agree to a special session?
Whatever that means, yes.
Okay.
It means like they're separate.
Separately, in about two weeks, maybe, that we break up and...
And then...
And just concentrate on these four in two weeks. Okay. You agree to that?
Yeah, no, that's...
Is there any problem with that legally?
We have to notice the public, public meeting.
Okay.
And then...
Is that enough time for a public meeting, like, in order to...
We have to notice the public hearing, continuation of the public hearing.
That's the attorney, yes.
Notice the actual meeting.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
I don't think ten weeks is...
And the actual plans then could be shown, not...
Plans, we want everything coordinated. I would like you to give us a topographical survey, so it would help people's perspective.
So Laurie is going on vacation. That's why she's not here in the morning, at four o'clock, right?
We can do it in a month. I don't care.
No, no, I'm saying, so can we make it three weeks so that Laurie could do a thing?
I'm fine with that.
Laurie, you could...
Is that enough time for you, Laurie? Is that enough time for you, Laurie?
Yes. That would be the second, is that what I'm thinking? No, I mean, the first.
Right, Matthew, we can do that.
Oh, oh, I'm actually gonna be away. Can you somehow manage the two-week mark? Laurie, can you have somebody else in the firm help? You can't?
This house, I'll do it tonight before I leave.
Wow. Did you hear what she said?
Yeah. That's great.
Oh, all tonight.
So let's do it tomorrow. All right, so, so...
We'll discuss it with...
With, yeah, we can do, discuss it offline. All right, good idea.
Two weeks is fine, then.
All right. So...
So I'm there with...
I'll make a motion.
With our houses tonight?
It's hard for you to, it's hard for us to understand what you're saying.
You're breaking up.
So, so we're adjourning the four houses till, to the special section two to three weeks from now, is that correct?
That's correct.
I want to be sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I thought it was two weeks.
Well, whenever it is, to be scheduled, to be scheduled.
Can everyone come here?
So can we...
So can I make that...
Or adjourn?
I'm gonna make a motion to table this. For a date to be determined, for us to consider these four margins and street applications only. And to, should we allow the public comment period to continue too?
Public comment is open.
Okay, so that will remain open. So can I get a second for that?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. No opposed. Thank you. See you soon.
Right.
Okay, so we're gonna move, move to two thirty-eight Main Street?
Yeah.
Who's here for two thirty-eight Main Street?
Here he is, he's coming up.
He's coming up. Okay. Thank you for your patience.
Hi, my name is Stuart Bass, who's on the architect, representing Geraldine Godison. And Julian Cole is the landscape architect, will be presenting sort of tag team.
Okay. So please tell us about the project.
Well, I think you probably all know this house, the Nathan Howell House. It was originally built in two thirty-three, and the major renovation of the house in about eighteen fifty. The Italianate design is attributed to that renovation project. So that's pretty much what's there today.
Do we have a slide of existing?
There is, yes.
And that's when it was changed, right? The door entry, you think?
Yeah, the entry went from the front to the side.
From the front to the side, yep.
Right, in eighteen fifty. At least that's what I understand.
Yeah.
There's an extensive historical document created by the previous owner, which has been very helpful in terms of understanding the timeline. So this, the photograph in the corner is the house at some unknown date, probably early twentieth century. And it's quite similar to where things stand now. The only difference, I think, is the, the balustrade on the, above that central bay window has been removed. And there have been some other details that were removed and rebuilt over the years. In fact, I just wanna, this is something that I found a little later.
The widow's law.
Can I share a couple of more photographs with you?
Oh, please. What, yeah. No, well, he had, I'm favorite person, the L S. That's all right. Yeah.
So the, the library happens to have, you might know this, I didn't, a map that was created in eighteen fifty-four, and it's a lithograph. And actually, I'm gonna give this...
Oh, I see, you took the, that's neat. You took the, you took the picture of the house, wow.
There's a lithograph from right around the time of the renovation project. It should, oh, sure, of course. And then there's, there are a couple other photographs here, leaving the one you can see down there. And there's a further photograph from nineteen seventy, which shows the house stripped of a lot of its features. And some of those have been added back, but some haven't. So the owner currently lives at one eighty-six, the Hennable French House. I guess it's going back about thirteen years, I found out through the timeline, that she went through an extensive restoration project of that house and did, in my estimation, a remarkable job bringing back to where it is today. The contractor who worked on this on that project, Jacqueline Murray, is here today, back there. And he's been tagged to do this renovation project too, which ostensibly is, on the exterior, a repainting of the house. I mean, it's essentially that, that's the biggest project, is repainting the house, bringing back some of the, the beauty of the original detailing as much as we can do. And in that way, the lithograph is kind of interesting because one of the other proposals we're making is to replace the railing that's there now, which is a relatively recent addition to the house, which probably was made by the last owner to replicate as best they could the original railing. The lithograph, inasmuch as it's real, we don't really know that. It's the only document we have from back when the house was renovated, shows a railing that we're attempting to replicate. The one that's there now is very heavy, made of probably composite wood material. We want to replace it with solid wood turn, turn members. So we're proposing something like that, and we did present that. One of the drawings actually shows what we're proposing.
Do you happen to know where the...
Yeah, we can, we might as well look at that now. So that's, I think it's, Carrie, it's two or three drawings from here. So this is the, this existing house showing the changes. So this, this drawing here is showing our proposal for the railing, which is in the lower left.
The lower left is, is...
Lower right.
You mean that drawing right there?
Yeah.
The hand drawing?
This hand, oh, it's really hard to see.
Yeah, it's hard to see.
Okay, well... Okay, well, the half, or.
Oh, they can't see it, here, I can make it, I can enlarge it.
Well, it's just, it looks like it got burned out, so this might be a better way of showing it, since I have it here. I know it's late.
That was better.
Wow.
This, 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 this is a better representation, so there is.
This is the existing railing.
Okay, here it is.
Yes, that.
Existing with.
Those.
Huh. Real porch.
So this is the, the sketch of that railing. It's a, it'll be a little bit hard to realize, but I think it will, in the end, will, will do the right thing, done itself.
And it's going to be on the?
It's on, it's actually on the, this, the entry side of the house, which is the south side of the house. And it will be replacing what was a later addition on the backside of the house with a, a very different railing. You can see it in the, you can see it if you wanna, yes, actually, it is here. That there is all, all needs to be replaced with, uh, the new railing.
Okay, so it's like a plain, that one's plain, the one that's there now.
That one's just plain balustrade, yeah, and the, the widow's walk, we're not proposing any changes to that except to repaint them.
Okay. Hmm. And repaint it white?
So the, the, the proposal for painting is the house is essentially gonna be white, the whole house will be white. It's a color is uh, OC one fifty-one, which is a really nice white. Um, and then there's a proposal for, well, I, I should also say that we wanna restore the shutters that are in that original photograph, so on all the windows, we wanna add shutters back in. And those would be this color. Um, which is a, it looks more bold inside, I think, than it is outside in the light. But it's a kind of a very, very faint greenish.
Has, has this house ever been white in its history?
Uh, it's, it's hard to say, but it looks like, based on the old photos, it did go through a transition and it turned dark brown at one point, I think.
It was maroon.
Red.
It was red.
Right, right, right.
It was red in the sixties.
Right, and then I think Nancy Richardson, the last owner, changed it to kind of an off-white color.
Hmm.
Um, I think, based on the lithograph, it was a very lighthouse originally.
I remember being with the gold. Yeah.
It's kinda hard to say, but the photograph is already, the, the unknown dated photograph, it's already dark, it's already dark, it's probably from the, as I said, probably the early twenties.
Yeah.
Uh, um.
I think it was that reddish color, it was a reddish, dark red color.
Right.
Uh, forever, very long.
But I'm reading the orig, uh, I, I suspect it wasn't that color originally.
Right.
It's hard to know, but just as reference, um, generally in the house, the Hannibal French House is that same, is it same white color that we're proposing? So, and it's, uh, the shingles, the shutter, they're definitely color.
Right.
Um, to have some variety, but.
They all look nice.
Then the other proposal we're making is change the front door, because as things stand, it's very, very dark in the entry hall. There's, there's really very little exterior light that comes in at all, so. We like to, to change them to a wooden glass door. We actually, we took from, and that's that same, same door, I think, which is, is that a little more legible? Can you see what we're proposing? So the photograph to the right is, uh, the Hannibal French House, those are original doors, we think. Um, and we'd like to do something similar to that to bring light in. We really like that, that, that look, that style of door. So the idea is to take the transom that's there now and remove the, the crossbar and then extend the doors all the way up to the top of the arch.
You think these doors that you currently have at two, three, eight Main are historic, original?
It's, it's possible, it's possible, it's not.
They look like they would be.
Yeah.
The historic.
It would be, I mean, this is, I like the idea of leaving the transom with the new door. See that space above?
Uh huh.
The transom would, would, uh.
Hope we can.
Have a transom light there.
Um, if they're historic doors.
We can. But that's the other house that we're looking at.
This is the Hannibal French House, this is the house we're talking about.
Right, and they went to make your house, yeah.
Those are storm doors we're looking at.
Yeah, those are the storm doors.
Right, but and behind them, I think are beautiful historic.
Zach could not, Zach wanted to go and see it.
Yeah.
But he couldn't get in, he, I mean, he couldn't get into the property.
I think we're gonna have to plan a site visit about that.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. But that's something he and I talked about, that's why I brought it up directly.
Good, so, um, just, if, since we're gonna talk to you again about this and we'll see a site visit, can you just give us a really quick kind of, uh, overview going forward of, have you left out anything in the scope of work? Is there anything left?
The color, the shutters on the door.
There, there's one more thing, there's.
Color change, shutters, new.
We're also, um, proposing, um, pendant lighting in the, the porch area, gas pendant lighting. And again, we're referring back to the Hannibal French House. Um, you can see a pendant light there, that was added, that's not historic, but. It, it works beautifully for that house, and we think it would work beautifully for, um, the Nathan Howell House too.
And you already have one? It looks like.
That's a regular.
Different type of fixture there, there's a pendant though, that's already existing. We're proposing changing the.
Changing the light.
Style.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll need to see.
Two are a similar fixture.
We'll need to see that.
And it being ga, the gas or the, or electric?
Gas.
And, and that's what's here, also at the Hannibal French House, correct gas?
That is at the Hannibal French House. We have a few more lights, there are a couple on the back that are sconces, but they're all from the same company, they're all, you know, they're all copper or bronze lights that, you know, they're beautiful.
So these are new additions, these sconces that you're just talking about?
They are, so on the.
The replacement of existing, or?
No, there are no, there's no light there now, it's, it's an eating porch.
Okay.
So there needs to be some light back there.
Okay.
Um, we also proposed removing a window, we're not going to need to do that anymore.
That's good.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um.
On the list.
So, so we'll table this, uh, big sub, and we'll have, uh, after we did the site inspection for the next meeting?
For the door.
For the door, we're gonna have it, we'd like to approve everything at one time.
Sure.
So we're clear on the scope of work. So what I'm suggesting is that we table this, that we have a, uh, site visit that Zach we know wants to go, and I'm gonna try to go, I think we all will try to go, it's an important structure.
Very important.
And, um, then at the next meeting, we can talk to you intelligently about, and, and finalize things.
Okay.
Okay.
Makes sense, um.
And you can present the, the kind of light that you wanna put there too.
Okay. Um, there's. The light spec is in the.
Oh, it's in there, I'm sorry.
It's there too. Um, Julian Cole will just present the exterior, some of the exterior work that.
Yeah, please.
Do you wanna pull it up on the touchscreen?
Sure, yeah, what, do you know where that is? Does Carrie know where that is?
Yep.
Okay.
I can even load it bigger. Is that good? That's perfect. So the landscaping of this house is amazing. So we really wanna change it too much, but there were a couple elements that are kind of like lacking due to more of an environmental standpoint, more so than anything else. So in the front, right now, there's privet, and it's just not doing that great because of this beautiful elm tree that's here that's casting a lot of shadow onto the privet. So we wanna change it to an ilex, which is gonna do a little bit better in the shade, and it's also evergreen. And originally, we were thinking about moving the driveway, but we decided we can't because of this beautiful elm. So we kinda just wanna do this little cut in so people will come to the front door. And so that's more, that's probably the largest change.
Like a walkway?
Well, there's the walkways here, but we just kinda like have this like little negative space, right now, the curb goes across.
Oh.
Just so people know, this is the front door.
Oh.
So there is a, a, a driveway there now, but we don't.
No, there is no driveway, it's still there.
Oh, there isn't. Oh.
There's already a walkway.
They were, yeah, we're just emphasizing the walkway a little bit.
Oh, okay.
Um, and then pretty much, things are staying the same, there's this beautiful box with clouds. And we're proposing to change the pool, I don't know if that's this board.
Hmm.
Hmm, hmm, okay, so. Now the pool's over here, and it's a, uh, I don't know if you can see it on this, it should be on the planting zoom a little bit more of the existing pool.
Oh, yeah, it, I don't know if you're gonna be able to see it.
But it's a, uh, it's a natural shape, but.
Oh, yeah, the kidney shape.
So you were kinda thinking something along more like, along with the time period, I mean, the way that, so kinda centering the pool on the backyard.
There it is. Can you see it?
Hmm.
It's like there.
Oh, yeah.
And it's also nicer because it's further away from the neighbors, so the setbacks will be a little bit better.
It's under the tree, or where is it?
It's, it's right here.
It's, it's, I think that's a proposed tree.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay, thank you, Megan.
Okay. A pool, a, a swimming pool.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. And that's lavender, is that what that is?
Uh.
The purple?
The purple, it might be hydrators, I have the plant list up there.
Okay.
Um, but pretty much it's, it's a meandering border, we're kinda just adding some plants and, uh, just making it a nice cohesive border on the back, so that there's nice privacy.
So from, from the sidewalk?
From the sidewalk.
Yeah. What, what is, what's?
From Main Street, is that?
Yeah, the Main Street sidewalk, where is that? That's right there, right? And what's the height of those plants now?
How's it, how's those plants right now? I would say six foot.
Yeah, height is.
But they're like see-through.
Okay, cuz it's, it's a shame to obscure a beautiful building.
Oh, you can sell it.
Too much veggies, vegetation.
Well, if you use them.
Okay.
So.
Alright, I think it sounds good.
And then you wanna look at the, the gates?
Sure.
Yes.
So that's the next slide. So. You're too good with the computers.
I know.
There you go.
Is that it?
Yes, this is the, uh, proposed, proposed new, uh, pedestrian gate, and.
It's going to be on the front.
On the front, yes, on the, along the road. And then we took, I got this image that I really liked, and then I kinda also made it the driveway gate. So I took that style and made a driveway gate, so also we'd like to replace the two gates, right now they're not matching, one's dilapidated and the other one, just like, uh, from the mid nineties, or.
Yeah.
Oh.
So don't, don't we have a gate height limit?
Yes.
Isn't that four feet?
Yes, um, no, they, I don't know. It depends, it's, if it's in the historic district, um, we have to look at the regulation. It's at four or six, I think outside of the historic district, it's six.
If, if it's in the front, it's four feet, right?
Yeah, this is the front gate.
This is a driveway, driveway gate.
Yes.
The, above there with the, with the white.
Yeah, that's the pedestrian gate, yeah.
Right, so that's.
Counting your four foot?
Yeah, and, 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 yeah. So, uh, if it's in the front of the property.
Okay.
Again, the idea is to, to, to open up the sightlines for people to see.
Fence or gate.
Yeah.
I know, we know fences.
Right, and, and so, um, we'll have to reconsider that.
Okay, so you're gonna let me know?
Well, I think we're gonna ask you for an alternative.
Okay.
Okay. Um, in terms of driveway gate, it's pretty much the same thing, it's like four feet also.
I believe so.
Yeah, so, um.
Whatever the.
That then is, is very high, and, and given that it's a six-foot man.
Aziz.
Six foot, it's two feet high.
You could still look over it.
I could still look over it, yeah.
Through it too.
But, but I think that that's also four feet.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
So, um.
Yeah.
Those couple things, it would be, so we'd like to, was look at your landscape plan in detail, but we'd like you to think about modifying it in terms of gates and fences that we just talked about, and, um, we'd love you to throw in some pollinators, I don't know if you have them in there, okay, and, and, um, and then we're gonna make a site visit, so.
For the doorway.
For the doorway, so I'd like to make a motion that we schedule, that we table this, and then a site visit. Um, and that, uh, you've been, you've been informed about some of the modifications you could, you should think of um, in terms of the fence and the gates.
Okay.
Okay?
I appreciate it.
So can I get a second?
Second, I'll motion.
Thank you for the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and I, I give you a sample of the paint.
Oh, are you?
Yeah, sure, it is.
I didn't.
I thought this was one of those bathroom key things. Thank you.
You guys are both.
Don't raise it, don't lift it.
Alright, thank you.
It, it matches your shirt almost.
Yeah, both of them.
It blends right in.
Guys.
Okay, so now, uh, who's here for forty-eight Lincoln Street, is that right?
I missed my entire opening at work for this.
Right, so we're onto forty-eight Lincoln Street, right?
Yep.
Okay. Look at, we got, no one's come to pick up the files, we've got all this stuff, let's throw that Mars and stuff over there.
I don't wanna see it.
Okay.
It gives it heebie-jeebies.
Yeah, yeah. Hello.
Hi there.
How are you?
Good.
Please identify yourself, sir.
My name is Joseph Danny, the architect and partner.
Danny is your last name?
Danny, T A N N E Y.
Danny.
Architect and partner of Converse Ocean for Architecture. I'm here representing Errol Taylor, the owner who's here as well, at seventy-eight Lincoln Street in the neighborhood.
Forty-eight, did he say, did he say seventy-eight?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, yeah, right, that's what I thought.
Thank you.
You've been struck.
There's some drawings as well?
They're gonna, they're gonna get copied, right, because it's not.
Excuse me. What?
Yes. Nothing there?
Okay, so we, we're looking at the topographical map. You wanna take, where do you want us to start, Sid?
So, start, I'll look at the slide and take it through each one, one by one.
Great.
So forty-eight Lincoln is very prominent site, is, it's one of the few remaining, uh, vacant houses on the corner of Lincoln and Wilson. And interesting, several interesting unique things about it, is that it seems to be at the high point of the neighborhood.
Right.
Along Lincoln, and then it slopes to the east about ten feet, and to the north, and to the south, about six feet. So also has mature trees that wrap three sides of property. It's almost a wooded lot that's been sort of carved out from behind.
Hmm.
Um, and when one approaches the neighborhood and you sort of go up that hill, can actually get a little bit of view of the water and back behind the houses of the block as well, so. We understand it's been a vacant lot for a very long time, and it's the only stop sign on Lincoln when you come down and you see it. So I'm sure that the neighborhood and the neighbors directly have been sort of. Enjoying this sort of vacant open block. The ride.
I don't know where she went, here she comes. Can we put, can we see it up here? No?
Can you see it?
I don't, I don't, I don't have it, no.
Okay, everyone has the total?
We do, we do.
So.
We have the whole pack.
Survey that, is that lots of many of our neighbors, especially three of those in place. Their house needs to be about five feet from the property line. Their wooden fence, um, and their sort of, uh, wooden curb is also on the front. Neighbor to the north on Harding, it's a brand-new house, they have a pool in the backyard and they've planted.
Guys, it's, you know what, I think, just go to page three. The third, third page. If you hear the, yeah.
Oh, thanks.
There you go, okay.
Yeah. So.
I'm sorry, I thought you, you were showing us the location, the proximity of your neighbors.
Yeah.
So I thought that that.
Just to sort of see the proximity of the pool, yes, yes.
Okay.
So, you need to go to the site plan. So our intention has been wanting to exist in contours under mature trees as much as possible. The house sits back, it's parallel to Lincoln, it's a two-story volume. It sits upon a one-story garage and a one-story, um, kitchen, dining, living, sort of communal space. So the second story, the long linear bar, are the private bedrooms. And the sort of bent finger is the kitchen, dining and living, and that bends relative to the setback. As we have two fronts, thirty-five foot setbacks, we have two backs, the thirty-foot setback. So a little around the large form of light, it's a strange, uh, dimensions. And the large setback sort of squeezes us into a smaller, somewhat of a smaller area. So the house is long and thin along Lincoln, and by bending that. That arm of the communal space, we create a little bit of a private exterior court.
Hmm.
To the left, to, and that court would be paved. And you enter that court from below that second-story volume, and we'll see it in some renderings as we come up. And it's a large covered porch that's open to the street. So the design maintains the slope by maintaining that high berm that's right along Lincoln. It's the highest part. And we're gonna drive behind that big long berm to maintain it and just poke through the trees. So when you come up under the covered porch on a stone terrace, sort of like a large welcoming front porch to the street. And then those steps go down to a lawn court, and that's gonna be the only, we'll say manicured lawn that surrounds the pool. And that's represented by that light green, the darker green surrounding it is intended to be all natural vegetation. For plants, for various, with the, those butterfly gardens and local pollinators.
Love it.
A lot of natural.
Nice, good job.
Vegetation. And because the mature trees are on three sides, the one side that's completely open flank, as we'll see as we move through the other. Pages, is open to our neighbor to the east. On the drawings, you can see we're proposing a line of of giant, grim giants along there for screening. Or some sort of screening that that provides privacy. And we'll see that in the renderings as well. Um, in addition, I wanna point out there's an ADU, the hatch.
Yeah.
It sits in the rear. And it creates a buffer to the neighbors behind us, there's additional screening in terms of the growth, but their pool is back there. So that ADU serves as the buffer between the two pools. You notice, uh, our pool sort of chucks out into the landscape, we're looking at, like, you know, an infinity edge to create. Long entrances, a sort of buffer between the neighbor's pool to the east.
Saltwater pool?
I'm sorry?
Saltwater?
Uh, that has not been determined.
I think the plants would appreciate.
The plants would appreciate the saltwater?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, in comparison to chlorine.
Yes.
Yes.
I hope.
It's gonna be beach grass.
Yes.
It's too much, right?
So the next page is the axonometric, which is sort of a rough modeling, which shows the massing location of the neighboring homes. But for the bars, it's the one in color. It's a strange axonometric, but it gives you a, uh. A sense of how it sits, the long part faces the. Lincoln Street and the smaller one-story pieces, sort of, they sort of create that back court, creating some privacy and breaking down the scale. As you move to the backyards and the other houses. The next page. Is a view across Lincoln Street, looking at the site. You notice the large burn with trees, that's the highest point, and if you look past that, this is in the winter, you can actually see the water in the distance, so. It's quite a view, and the first time I came there and sort of noticed going up that hill, I assume. That's sort of a common feature where people walk into the beach or walk in the neighborhood, you probably get a little. Uh, it's nice to get that air, if you will, the view back. And the view to the right is in the summertime, up and over that berm. And looking, and from where we're standing, the colored photo with a with a green, it slopes ten feet to our neighbor, and that's three Wilson there to the right. And you can see they have a pool and some, kind of outside space and. The next page. Is a view from Wilson looking into the site. And you can see three Wilson just to the right, like I said, that house is, seems to be about. Five feet from the, from the, uh, from the site, you see their wooden fences, right? In the far distance, you can see the green screen from our neighbor, uh, at two Harding, and you can see their white house sort of poking up above it there. The blue house to the right is the next neighbor further over on. The view on the right is looking back, so this would be, I'll show you a rendering later, where sort of the pool and lawn court will be in the new proposed design. Looking back at the neighborhood. The next page is our neighboring Harding, just showing proportions and colors. I mean, similar group driveway, white house, blue accent, patterned, it was black and a blue. The next page is the one directly across three thousand one hundred Lincoln. It's a gray house with white trim, white windows, with a lawn, with no landscaping in the front. And you see, when you step back into our property, behind the tree line, you can see how. How, uh, see, the view just, that view becomes, and that's our intention, to keep all these trees and just poke through the driveway. The next page. Is the basement. Laundry, mechanical, storage, future rec room, office, bathroom. You can see the rectangles to the left, those are replacements of the ADU and pool and the garage above us. The next page is the first floor plan, this is where you can start to see the sense of the way the site is laid out. Where we zoom in a little bit, so we have an entry gate, which serves as our fourth gate for our pool. And so you walk into sort of a smaller sort of gate zone with grasses and flowers, up steps. Through the front porch, this is covered by the second-story volume above us. That's where it leads into entry into the house. You can see there's sort of that entry core with storage pantry, powder room. The dining room and the living room, sort of bend is one big space. The living room then opens out onto that terrace, and that's where those terrace steps go down to the lawn court and the pool. You can see here the edge with the lawn court and the pool at the shadow line. So from the terrace, we. The pool, the house terrace, we go down to the lawn terrace, it's just thirty inches, keeps us from having to have railings. And then from that pool on, just steps down to the natural grade, another thirty inches. So what we're trying to do when the house is terraced down the hill, sort of keeping it with the landscape and keeping everything left. The next page, the second floor, which is that perpendicular bar. It sort of bridges across the top, it creates that covered porch below, this is where private bedrooms and bathrooms are. There's also a private covered patio up there. And then, um, it's with a hot tub and. Chairs and a small gas fireplace. And along the edge of our neighbors to the east, we're planting a two-foot-thick planter wall. With high grasses of plants to help diffuse the view from our porch to theirs and the oysters. Otherwise, the porch, the railing is open in the sense that it opens to the interior courtyard with the. Of the hallway of the yard. The next stage is the front elevation. You can see the slope of the land, the next, the, the high point. It's, it's now. The interiors are a gray under the cedar, with white windows and white accents. And you can see something open, plenty more. One thing I wanna point out is.
I I think it's missing, I think it's missing here, I don't have it. I don't have that.
Well, he's talking about this page.
No, I know, I know. I'm just.
It's right here.
Yeah.
Alright, but I looked up and saw that on the screen, so, okay, my confusion. Okay.
So, the front elevation, cedar, white windows, white accents, I wanna point out the roof proposing a pestle solar shingle roof. The image on the far right, we've used this before, it's a little dark and hard to see. But I brought additional photographs from other projects that have used it, and be glad to show, cuz I know there's concern about reflectivity.
Is the roof, um, pitched or flat?
Pitched, thirty degrees on one side and thirty-five on the short side.
Oh, I thought it was flat.
Yeah, we 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 do have some experience with Tesla, some of the early models of the Tesla, the shingle. And and ar- architectural-style roof and.
This is the specs that are used for, you see these, this is ours, these are others. These are the specs, it's both.
These are, these are different style panels than the one, they, the other ones look more like shingles.
These are like all the way across, right, yeah.
The entire roof, even the, the edges, so it's not gonna look like something wide, this one roof, it's the material of the roof itself.
Oh.
So, it gives you a maximum solar energy gate. Other thing I wanted to say about that, we're also planning on using the thermal.
Yeah, he said that, he said that, I understand.
Wow. It's fantastic.
It's driving on one hand, the, 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 the hall space of the ADU. They don't want to, that is still inside of. The. After the front elevation on Lincoln, that's the long facade. The next elevation is the south one, it's exceeding, you know, it's a flat perspective. The tall part, you see, this is the, the facade real on, on Wilson, it's only sixteen feet wide. I should also mention, um. Probably do this if you could, so that they, the facade, if you see there, step back. In elevation, as they do, you know, in section in plan relative to the slope of the site. This is a good one, you can see the slope from the, from the left all the way to the right, from Lincoln all the way to the east. The next elevation, it's sort of all those phrases flattened, pointing from the east. Back at the house. That white volume is a fireplace both inside and on the top. And the last elevation is to the north. The ADU, you can see, has high windows just to let in light. And that's all screened from the neighbor. Their natural screening. And the next is a perspective. Of the front elevation.
So this is Lincoln Street?
Yeah, so this one, this one here is the front elevation, and you can see the opening. It's like the big front porch, so the idea is. That this is similar to the image we showed before with the nat- with the natural bombs, the idea is this gets, here we go, can't forget that. Let's, as if we're in the street on Lincoln now, bypassing. The intention is this, you know, reinterpretation of a front porch, you can go through and see, but the pool terrace is down, so you don't really see that. But you can see over the neighbor's fence. And that's the blue neighbor in the back, there's trees that cover them, but that's the, the relationship of it, so. Drive around this, up through the gates and the steps, you can see also the grain on top of the garage roof and the trellis. So the idea is, is still sort of engulfing, there's these natural trees all around, you wanna plant local vegetation. And so, you know, it's not a suburban lawn, um, and, uh. Find it in, in behind these trees. And the next one?
This is the gravel driveway?
And the next one, the gravel one, this is what it looks like when you walk back from the beach.
Right.
So, it's probably the slope of the land, the driveway sort of slopes up, it doesn't. It's not actually in the rendering, in steps. But you can see that, the way it sits behind the berm, and you get a little crack view back into the, into the rear yard. The next stage. Is, is, um. Do one more now. And this is from Wilson Street, so. We've stepped into the trees, you can see three Wilson right here. And so this is our south elevation, that's a sixteen-foot wide beast. And that's the dining room that steps back, and the living room is parallel to Wilson, and the ADU is parallel to Harding.
Alright.
And, yes. Well, you can also see the, the tree screening there on the right. And you see, behind the ADU is the neighbors behind us. See that? Next image? And this is the image I told you before, looking back at three Wilson, we're right in front of the ADU, this is, you know, the lawn court. The pool, it's steps and naturally goes down there, we go up to the. To the terrace here, and you can now get a sense of what it's like to be in this interior court. Sort of, this is a little more open, and here's sort of a dining area, more protected from the neighbors and their porch. But sort of somewhat, you know, the relationship and welcoming to the street. And you can see the screening there, two rounds of three Wilson, so the idea is just a knock between their roof deck and. The living room, because the living room is still, the intention's been to sort of. To screen the neighbor, yet, um, a while the view still. And then the last image. So on top of the living room here, you can see there's a, a roof patio up there. And the last image. Kind of the rendering, it's nice up there, this is that private patio for the bedrooms. Under a roof, some screen shade, this is that thickened planter wall, right here with plants, the fireplace, the open rail talks to the court. And you can see our neighbor's house in the white right there. So the idea is to thicken the wall, like this big, with plants, it was a dimension, eight-three meters.
Yeah.
Between, so.
So that's all gonna be wood? You're thinking?
Okay, I can see the.
Alright, I I kinda like the idea of modern. While preserving a lot of the trees that are still sta- that are standing. Um.
He's only four.
The scale of it, what, what's the size?
Three thousand seven hundred and twenty-two, thousand, about thirty-two hundred, the garage is just under five hundred.
Okay.
What's the minimum in the area, is it four thousand?
Three thousand seven hundred and ninety-three is maximum.
No, 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 in.
In the, in the, um.
Four thousand.
Four thousand.
Four thousand, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
He knows.
That I know.
That he does.
Um. Uh, the, with. I mean. It's hard to see with the rendering, I know it's just a discussion item. Um. The overall look of it. Since this is a discussion item, I just wanna convey, um. Less commercial. Factory. Maybe less like manufactured look and more natural materials, like you're using wood, and I think that's great. Maybe the color should be natural wood, um, and, okay.
That's weather.
Yeah.
That's what it looks like.
Weather, okay.
Yeah.
So I just don't wanna see like, like, there was a certain perspective where. It almost looks like shipping containers with safari awnings. Um, so I just think, you know, embracing the nature of it all while keeping it modern is a great idea.
And, and we are going to build it offsite.
Really?
Alright.
We've done.
The.
A lot of them out here, I mean, they stand in on the North Fork and Sheldon Island.
Okay.
The images I showed you, the Cedar Siding is one very similar to this. In the town of Bridgehampton, a much smaller lot, the modest homes from back into the sides.
On Lumber Lane?
What's that?
Is that on Lumber Lane?
Hester.
Oh, okay.
Hester.
On the, this is, it says, let's see what they have, what this is. This is the aerial view, site aerial view, when I looked at it there first, oh my gosh, that looks like a school.
Yeah, yeah.
But then, you know, as you went through everything. I warmed up to it.
Right, I hear you.
I had the exact same reaction. I was like, oh my god, and then as you went through, we went, oh, that's, you know.
Because you don't see.
Yeah.
Because of the burn, right, burn? You don't see this, like this, you know what I'm saying? You want to go up and screen and.
And that's, you know, I know the site well, and it's. It's not really clear. How they've used the topography, the natural topography to their advantage. And. But I think that was, I was listening to some of the grunts and groans while you were going through this. They felt that you had handled a lot of challenges very effectively. And. I think. Actually, the neighbor on Wilson. I still get this, each confused, the blue house. Would benefit from this screening and stuff that in terms of giving them more privacy, because they're really exposed to anybody who walks behind that lot. So I, I think this is, personally to tell you, I think that this is a remarkable design. And. And I'm an advocate for. For modular construction, so it's just a personal thing, but. The, the. The only question I have is about the solid panels, and we'd really like to know. In terms of make sure, because one of, one of our trustees actually had a house where the Tesla, but these were the smaller ones. I think the original models were just almost like little. Little shingles, glass shingles, but it did, it did, he didn't complain about it, but he ended up selling the house. And, and he did say the afternoon, he got a. A reflective globe from his neighbor. So. I'd just like to look into that.
Sure.
Because, because it's so low. Right? That it could, if there's a lot of reflection off of this, it could actually heat up the street, right? I mean, you know that as an architect, that the first. First rendering.
They, they actually have a glare study, they did it for two of our properties in the village.
Right.
They do like a whole Tesla desert.
So we'd like to see that, because anyway, the Nets Arena. The first designer, it was all glass, and it was, and he was, he was an architect. Who had raised the sidewalk temperatures of his building, of, of, of the, next to the buildings. To sometimes over a hundred and ten degrees, at least on reflection. So that's something we just, we need to be careful about. Okay, now to the extent. Well, it's important, if you put vegetation there. It might, it might not survive, so we just need to figure that out. Anybody have, anyone else have any other comments? Okay, so we didn't leave us. This is still, this is still, this is a public hearing, right?
No, this is a discussion.
Okay, so we don't have anything else, I mean, do we have anything else, any comments?
I mean, anything you'd want to change, if they're going in the right direction, good.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to look as natural as it can, embrace nature.
It sounded like you were doing that or making an attempt.
Great, alright, twelve Lincoln Street.
Bethany, you're good?
Yeah.
And Julie, okay, if that, I'll move that we close the discussion, can I get a second?
Isn't there another one?
I don't think we need to do. You don't have to, I'm just gonna do it.
Okay, so fine, so now I will take a motion to end the meeting.
No.
No? Do you have one more?
Twelve Lincoln Street.
Two on Lincoln Street, oh my goodness, I was wondering why you were sitting back there.
Waiting very patiently.
Good evening, Mort.
Thanks.
I'm Christopher Wall, with Wall Design and Build Corp. I'm just gonna open up quick and then I'll pass to Robert O'Shea, the architect. We're here tonight on two things, first is seeking approval for demolition of the existing structure that's on this property. A nineteen sixty-one high rash that's been abandoned for, what I'm told is approximately ten to fifteen years. So, what I was told, that does not require a public hearing, so we're seeking approval for that evening, and then we'd like to discuss the post-house.
Okay, do you do that?
I, I, do you have any images of, of ten Lincoln, of the existing building?
Have some existing, a few packets here.
Thanks.
Photos of the existing building as well, and it's a, this.
It's a full package, keep your.
Then some. That we have in place.
Oh, yes, okay.
We are now. Okay.
I think this property has been.
Yeah.
Just think they're worth looking at.
Sixty's range.
Look at the doorway, how nice that is.
Kind of corny.
Corny, yes. I like it, there's a little figurine in there.
Megan, you got some great ones. All I would tell you is that this property has been vacant for at least twelve years.
Twelve?
Yeah.
Yeah, all the plants up against it.
Okay, thank you, now that's helping.
Okay, yes, I appreciate, of course, I appreciate you agreeing to take us, as the house manager, having a preliminary discussion. So that's to be, can be properly prepared for the public hearing when that, when that comes. So seeing what's there currently, terribly overgrown, that's all, obviously, he thought. He thought it was taking a while to compose, maybe a two-story. Sneak, simple forms in a modern design with macro cedar shingles stained white. Four, four-like casements, you can see in the renderings. In a sandstone color, it's like a. A gray tint. We have a gray blend. Our materials, asphalt shingles, and some metal, standing sea metal roofs over the front porch. Near porch and the one-story portions of the gear still. The, we have a two-car garage, detached, same materials. Will be sweet floor, feminine, near porch, and on the opposite end of that, we will see just a small. Covered patio over the wall in the back, and some cabinetry inside. And we've done, we've complied with all the limits we decided, the floor areas, height setbacks, etc., to the end of the floor, the fields. Always happy with the report. Height as well, I've indicated on over Jordan, I'm not sure if you have those packets, whether you can see those, not knowing that this was on account of the.
Right, we haven't, this is what you gave us, is what we have.
The two, the high points of the building, thirty-two, I believe it was thirty-two, four minutes tonight. That's at the absolute highest point. Perimeter of the building, plus the ground. It is. About minefield.
I don't know, have you been here for the whole meeting?
I have, I'm glad I came here early.
You're glad you came early?
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you came early, because what I'm gonna say won't hurt your feelings. So, so you've heard what we said about all this glass, and these glass walls, and all of that, so the first thing that strikes me here. Is that this is what's going to be facing the road, I'm just trying to think of the direction now, I know there's, there's.
There's north, I'm sorry.
You're gonna be, yeah, so you're gonna be on the south side of the road, you'll be facing north. And you are. Across from the Nature Preserve, I think, aren't you?
No, the Nature Preserve is to the rear of this property.
There's one there.
Okay.
And then there's, there's an empty lot.
Across the street.
Across the street, that's part of a nature preserve too.
I believe that, I believe that an empty lot is now under construction or?
No, that's, that's too down.
Oh, okay.
I was unaware that it was a preserve, although it was just an empty lot.
You do, it is across the street from there.
Yeah, the new construction is too heavily down.
Then you're suggesting that.
So, so I'm suggesting.
Not so much.
It's, you know, yeah, not so much glass, unfortunately, the scale of these houses is getting. Much larger, much larger. And. This just seems to me like it's, it's. Again, I talked to people about the color, I know you know that white makes things look bigger, and people like to buy bigger. But it also, it also increases the sense of massing that you could get, right? So. Would anybody else like to comment, I finished what I had to say.
I was just gonna say, the rendering, I agree about the windows. The rendering makes it look larger to also, like you said, that's when you look at the, at the actual.
What is the size of it?
The gross floor area is thirty-seven seventy-four.
Okay. We need a public hearing. My feeling is that it is very stark and very white and. Sort of harsh looking. I was wondering if there's a way to soften. Soften the look of it.
I actually like the back better.
Yeah, turn it, flip it around.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Also because the windows don't take up so much, there's a lot more shingles.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'm getting, I'm getting a sense that color mixed in with the white would.
Help.
Help things out.
Maybe reduce some of the sizes of the, of the glass on the street side, yeah, on the front.
Yeah, less, less glass.
Because people are just gonna cover them up with curtains anyway, so.
That would be a lot of curtains.
Yeah.
I'm telling you.
Well, that'd be your man once. Push a button.
Is this, is this for customers to suspect though?
Don't think there's not people going again. And some white.
Exactly.
Megan, have you seen it?
No, it's up.
It's a plant.
No, maybe just give it some personality. Maybe the pitches are different shapes or different heights. Maybe you want to salvage this door, because it's lovely. And these windows, I love. Salvage the whole rant, no, I'm joking. But, I mean, I personally can't say that I can say yes to demoing a house without going to look at it, and since I didn't know this was happening. Like, I would need to go see, like, despite what people say, it's been vacant twelve years, I personally need to see it with my own eyes, so that's just how I feel. I'll look from the street.
Yes.
It was built, just to add, I don't know if you heard me earlier, it was built in nineteen sixty-one.
Yeah, sixty-one, yeah.
Deserted.
It's blind.
Abandoned.
Yeah.
Abandoned.
It's just like my own morals, like I need to see it with my own eyes.
You have a problem with that? Abandoned house.
Not, no.
I'm an ownerly official, two different villagers, and it's, it's a difficult to handle.
It's, it's, some of these things are due to issue with chain, chain of title and ownership. Among the family members and that sort of thing, particularly when it's more than one.
Right.
You know, cousins. Gets left.
Alright.
So.
And of course, we'd need a, we'll need a landscape plan.
Yeah, it's all a discussion, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so, we would like to see, and, and you know, one of the things, the landscaping plan, we'd like to see some renderings with the landscaping in it. This is for anyone's question, this is pretty much a flat part of, of Lincoln, of, of the street. I think that. What you could do to soften up would be, would be appreciated. Okay, this really looks very stock, actually. Like, bought, bought all standard sized windows, you know, in terms of stuff that can come off the shelf, large. Or, these are fixed lights?
Some of them are.
Okay, so which ones are we, your minds?
The fixed lights are going to be right side of the house as you look at that.
Okay, those are the floor to ceilings, okay. And. Okay, so, so you need fire code issues to be addressed. In terms of exits, where, where, do you have any window exits from the second floor?
Oh, yeah, second, I have, I have all of the. Building cover standards. Spaces and replier, all of the windows are all outfitted with.
So what I, what I just provided you with there is just a preliminary landscape layout that just follows the, follows the structures and follows the accessory structures and. Again, just as part of the discussion, we put together something simple there to get your feedback in hopes of bringing you the real deal next time.
Okay, good. Now, would we go right to a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So, that will be.
It would be all in the.
I'll just say. Come back with every, every single wall.
So, so try to think about breaking up this mess. Okay. Or de-emphasize it, again, I know it's not part of your marketing scheme, but, but it's, it's. It's, unfortunately, you've got a modular that looks pretty stuck being completed. You've got a stick-built looking stock that's being completed. And you're all right within five or six lots of each other. Right on Lincoln, you know what I'm talking about, the one at the turn and, so, so. It would be nice to, to see if there's a little more variety here. Or, or something that gives it. A unique quality. Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I've really valued the input of this board and about earlier, to kind of help us. Respond, complete applications, you know, boy, the next.
You've heard a lot, you've heard so much.
But you got a sense of it, we're not, we're not picking on you and. And, and so, thank you for this.
As far, as far as I understand with the landscape plan, and I was, yeah, I was glad I was here earlier this year, some of the regulations regarding the removal of trees there of. Of a certain caliber.
Yeah, that's, that's brand new, that's just beginning.
Yeah, that's, one of the villagers I worked for just passed this tree legislation that I, I'm gonna jump out for a window, being the one that has to go around it, enforce it, so.
I'm sure our guy feels, I'm sure our guy feels the same way.
The tree, the trees are happy.
Add it on and, you know.
With that, when, when you, you, you do site visits as a rule for these or just when you're gonna knock a house down and I just?
We do site visits based on, I, I'd say it's pretty spontaneous. It, it varies. It's like anything else in real estate, everything is its own case. And so the site visits mainly are for historic house, homes. So you don't really have to worry about that. But, but I think that to make its point, it'll be helpful to everybody if they drive down that street and see what the neighbors look like and are going to look like. To get some context because, um. To some extent, we're, we're, we're losing our, our historic, uh. Historic nature in that area.
No, I, I was, I, I, again, I, I enjoy watching some of this stuff. So, um, if, I think some beautiful presentations remain on some of the historic buildings right on Main Street.
Yes.
If I were here, you know, your building on Main Street, we'd be having a very different conversation right now.
Got you. Okay.
Yeah.
So, are, are you the owner of these? Gentleman the owner, who's, who was the team? You're the architect?
That's the owner.
Okay. Do gentlemen have any questions?
No, I can answer a little bit.
Okay.
I, I, I do have one statement, just in regard to put that glass on the right side. We will take into consideration, but it is essential to the stair tower that we created there. So it, it does play into the inside of the house a lot there. Obviously, that doesn't mean we can't make adjustments to it, but just so you're aware of why it's there.
This is a growing trend we're seeing, yeah, lighthouse lane.
We had another one of those.
Okay, alright. Well, thank you. Uh, and I'd like to, if you guys don't mind, we'd like to close the meeting.
Motion to end the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?